Twenty twenty one regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at six oh four P M. Uh, we will, I will ask uh council member Montero to do the invocation tonight, please. Uh, and we will, I'll be leading the pledge of allegiance. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I have a bow by the head? Dear Lord, thank you for this great day. Thank you for your wisdom. Thank you for all the expertise and the wisdom you're gonna give to us to make decision for this great city of the city of Hawthorne. And we pray that all of those that are suffering from this COVID pandemic that ease their pain and for all of those other that are suffering from some other diseases like mental health and cancer that could be a light for them also. So we wish that this meeting would be fruitful for all and we would make sure that the business of Hawthorne is taken care of. Amen.
Amen. Okay, everyone, please stand. Please face your nearest flag. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands.
One nation, God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, colleagues. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you re- uh, do the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, council member Montero.
Present.
Council member Patterson.
I'm here.
Council member Ray English.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All are present.
Okay. All right. Thank you, all of, all of council members and our city clerk is here and our city treasurer who are here. So just wanna, for the sake of efficiency, um, I want to just remind of those who are doing the presentations in the first part of the city council meeting that there's uh rec- a ten minute limit for those presentations. Uh, I, I know you already know that, Mr. City Clerk. Just uh, for anybody who's bringing anybody to do any presentations that are not part of, that are not familiar, if you can let them know that it's a ten minute uh lit- ten minute limit in the future, please. And uh, and just, and if we could try to, as city council members, uh, try to stick to the main topics of discussion um, that are listed on the, on the agenda. Specific topics, sometimes we do veer off and our city attorney sometimes has to bring us in line and remind us that we can't talk about things that are too far away from what was listed here, okay? Item number three is a presentation on the governor's recall election. City Clerk Jimenez, uh, can you please proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just uh, um, as a reference, I'm also keeping time. So I'm giving everybody a two minute notice if they're close to the ten minutes. Um, so yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to welcome and thank Jeff Klein from the L A County Registered Recorder County Clerk's Office for providing us an update regarding the governor's recall election. Um, so thank you, Mr. Klein. You have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Jimenez, and uh, thanks to the council for having me tonight. Uh, excited to be here and promote the information about the recall election. I do have a brief uh PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to present. Uh, and then I can happily answer questions and um before I start, I just wanted to let you know my role at the registrar's office. Uh, I oversee our civic engagement, our community relations and our legislation. So if there's anything I can do to assist with the recall and outreach, if you have events in your city or if you have questions uh later on about the recall or elections beyond, always feel free to reach out to me. I'm always available and accessible and, and Dr. Jimenez knows this as well. He's been a fantastic partner and Hawthorne's been a fantastic partner uh, with our office. So appreciate all that help and all the assistance.
Sir, um, so you, so you mean you're gonna help us with the recall election, not the actual recall, right? Because the recalls.
The recall election, correct. Yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll be running the recall election. Yes.
Yes.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right. So let me go ahead and share my PowerPoint. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, so as most people here are aware, the election day is September fourteenth. Uh, and it, it's, it will be similar to elections that we've run in the past, but there are some variations and I'll go over there in just a minute. Before I do, uh, we have some key dates. Some of them have passed. Uh, we're now into August. Uh, vote by mail ballots will be going out on August sixteenth and uh, in L A County, all voters get a vote by mail ballot. Regardless if they've requested one in the past or not. Uh, you also have the option to vote in person. So this gives voters the choice of voting by mail or voting in person, and I'll talk about a little more into that, into details around that in a minute. Uh, we also will have voting at our office, in-person voting i- in Norwalk starting on August sixteenth. And then also our vote by mail drop boxes will open on August sixteenth. Uh, August thirtieth is the close to, close of registration. While we do have conditional voter registration, so even if someone misses the registration deadline, uh, we do recommend everyone register by August thirtieth because that will ensure they get a vote by mail ballot. With conditional voter registration, it's an in-person voting service. Um, September fourth is when our in-person uh vote centers open. Uh, those will be our eleven day vote centers and then September eleventh will be the opening of our four day vote centers. And then, of course, September fourteenth is election day. Uh, and then in October, uh, we will be doing all the, well, late September and into October, we will be uh certifying and, and, and conducting the canvas and the audit of the election. And October twenty second is the date for certification. Uh, so recalls are uncommon in California, so some people may not be aware of how they work. Uh, so just wanted to give a little information. There's essentially two questions on the ballot. The first is a yes or no question that will say, shall Gavin Newsom be recalled, removed from the office of governor and voters will vote yes or no. Uh, they don't have to vote on that question. They don't have to vote on either questions. They can vote on one question. It's really up to the voter. But regardless of how the voter votes, uh, there will be a second question and they'll have a list of candidates. There's forty-six candidates and the voter has the option to choose uh for a candidate, uh, should Gavin Newsom be recalled. And it's a pretty, uh, it's a simple majority, so more than fifty percent, question one, uh, that will determine whether or not the governor is recalled. And then for the uh question two, it's whichever candidate has the most votes. Okay, so a little more details about the voting services. Uh, one unique aspect to this election is that ballots will be received by our office up to seven days after the election, as long as they are postmarked by election day. As mentioned, vote centers will open from September fourth to fourteenth. We will have two hundred and fifty-three vote centers around L A County. There'll be a hundred and eight eleven day vote centers and then a hundred and forty-five four day vote centers. Uh, one interesting thing to note about this is that it, this election is a little bit of a hybrid between a special and a regular election. So the total number of vote centers reflect what we would normally have in a special election, but their duration or the period number of days uh, wa- is reflective of a regular election. So it's a bit of a unique election in that respect. Uh, the hours will be like November, our early voting period will be ten A M. to seven P M. And then election day will be the traditional seven A M. to eight P M. Uh, there'll be about four hundred drop boxes open around L A County. Those have been very popular for voters. And those will open on August sixteenth. Uh, more than half of the voters utilize the vote by mail drop boxes in the November election, so it's something that's been very popular with voters. Also, this election is unique in that any voter may use the remote accessible vote by mail option. Normally, that's reserved for voters with uh, specific needs, but in this election, uh, any voter may use the R A B B M uh service. Uh, there's three options for returning your vote by mail ballot. One is return it by mail. It is postage paid. Uh, as mentioned, you can use the drop box and then also someone can drop their vote by mail ballot off at any vote center. We recommend subscribing to Where Is My Ballot at California dot ballot tracks dot net. That sends updates uh every step of the way with a vote by mail ballot when it's sent to you, when it's received, uh, and, and different points of uh contact in, along the way. Um, someone can request a replacement vote by mail ballot or a multi-weekly vote by mail, vote by mail ballot at our uh website, L A vote dot net. I'd like to mention the replacement vote by mail because in the summer, a lot of people do travel and take vacations, so you can request a ballot to be sent to a temporary address. Okay. All right. So this is our uh webpage where we have different vote by mail services. I just wanted to highlight this page, but if you go to L A vote dot net, you can find all the different services there. And then on the right, there are ballots available in multiple, multiple languages uh for voters who require the uh, a translated ballot. I do have a quick video here on how to use the ballot marking device. Uh, just a quick note, um, it'll be laid out a little bit differently just because of how the recall is. But if you haven't yet seen how it works or you need a refresher, I thought I would include this video. I'll narrate it along the way. So it is still a paper-based system. Voters will choose the language that they would like to put it in. And they will insert their paper ballot to the tray on the right. Now they got that ballot when they checked in at our uh check-in booth. Uh, and then they can start voting. If they have a poll pass, I'll explain that in a second. But if they don't, they would start making their selections. So for the recall, you'll have one screen with a yes, no question. And then another screen where you'll have all the candidates. Now with forty-six candidates, you're gonna have to scroll down a few times. Uh, we have where about five selections will fit on the screen and the sixth selection will be cut off. Uh, so there'll be a four candidate sitting on the screen, but it'll, will require voters to scroll down. And then also there will be uh, uh, our, our, our election staff will be trained to help vote accordingly. Once the voter has made all their selections, they will review as you saw and then they will print their ballot. And it puts onto the paper. They have another chance to repeat it. As long as it looks good. The ballot, and it goes into the ballot box at the back. Now I'm gonna talk about the I S B. This has been a very popular service.
Sorry, Jeff, you have two minutes, just.
Okay, and I think that's all on me. Okay. Uh, one unique thing about the poll pass is that uh, there'll be a search feature uh, on the I S B, so voters can quickly find their candidate. But for the most part, a poll pass works.
Hey, Los Angeles. We know your time is valuable, so the county has made it even easier for you to vote in person in a quick and accessible manner. In twenty twenty, all registered voters will be able to use the new interactive sample ballot. With the interactive sample ballot, you can review all your candidates and measures and pre-select who you'd like to vote for before going to the vote center. It's simple. You just input your name, address and zip code, go through your selections, and once you've finished, you'll have your poll pass. The poll pass is a Q R code that you can print or download to your device to take with you to the vote center. Once at the vote center, just scan it into a ballot marking device, review your selections and cast your ballot. Voting just got a lot easier. Learn more about the interactive sample ballot at V S A P dot L A vote dot net.
Right. And then the last slide I have here is just talks about the safe election. All election workers will be required to wear a mask. Voters, if they want to vote inside, they'll have to wear a mask. If they choose to not wear a mask, uh, they will need to go back to their vehicle and they would vote using curbside voting. We'll have a P P available uh before you enter, so if you forget your mask, we'll have one available. And we'll be sanitizing all the equipment and social distancing to make sure it's a safe environment. Um, so this is pretty much identical to what we did in the November election. And that's it. So I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. So let me stop sharing.
Anybody want to ask any questions? Uh, council member Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Jeff, for the, for the presentation. We appreciate your time. Um, quick question, because you know, when you look at the two question, right? Uh, question number one, shall Gavin Newsom be recalled, removed from office of government? Yes or no? And then the second question. Uh, why they didn't put something in there that say, if you vote yes, then answer question number two, because some people might go just answer question number two. Even if they say yes or no, they're gonna still try to check a box on question number two.
So that language has been taken directly from the Secretary of State and what is required uh for the election code. Uh, so there's really no flexibility in how we design those questions.
So, so I hope is there like a campaign to educate the voters more about how to answer question number one, question number two?
Absolutely. We have a, we're doing a full of media campaign. Uh, we're putting a lot of money into this election in terms of media to educate voters because we know that this is something very unusual and that voters aren't used to uh, the, the recall election and how the ballot is structured. So we definitely have a pretty robust campaign. In fact, we just sent out our uh digital toolkit, which Dr. Jimenez uh received probably late this afternoon. There's a lot of good information that can be shared, um, and it is something we're promoting to a lot of the community organizations that we work with. And in, and please feel free to share that toolkit or, or send them to us, send organizations to us who are interested in getting that toolkit and we're happy to, to have.
I'll send the, yeah, I'll share the toolkit with everyone on the council.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any more hands up. Um, so I appreciate, uh, we appreciate you being here, uh, Jeff. Uh, Klein, thank you so much for your presentation. And uh, it's definitely gonna be a interesting election, of course. I mean, recalled, whether he gets recalled or not. But the interesting part is that there's so many uh candidates to, out there to replace him. So that's what, like, what was the number?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Okay, so that's just uh.
It's a lot, yes.
Crazy, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you, can you tell us what, um, to, just real quick, uh, to qualify to be a candidate to, for governor, like to, to replace Governor Newsom, what did you need to do?
Uh, it was a filing fee and signatures and I can't remember the amount or the number, but uh, uh, it was, there were a, a certain minimum amount you had to pay to be able to qualify for the ballot. Uh, Dr. Jimenez, I don't remember what that was, but I can't.
No, I wouldn't be able to tell you this time.
Okay, let us know later, uh, Mr. City Clerk, just out of curiosity only. Thank you very much, Mr. Klein.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jeff. I really appreciate it. And uh, just so everyone know, he's very accessible, so definitely if you guys have any questions, uh, please, you know, contact him and I can provide you his information as well. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Aye. Item number, item number four is a presentation on the Hawthorns, on Hawthorne's Fallen Heroes Foundation Scholarship Program. Um, Chief E, Chief Ishi, are you here?
I am. Good evening.
Yeah, you have the floor, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I just wanted to quickly uh, um, give this presentation uh and keep my time short because I wanted to introduce the, the recipient here. Several years ago, we started talking about having some sort of uh scholarship in memory of two of our fallen officers, Officer Andrew Garten and Sergeant Leonard Luna. And uh, it was important for us to have their names um in memory to uh, for our newer officers, but also our community, that uh, these officers, you know, paid ultimate sacrifice in doing their best to protect our community. And, you know, a lot of agencies, I got a lot of, I, I went around and, and uh, we got a lot of information from different agencies. And our staff came up with this great program of honoring uh our fallen officers um in a manner where we could uh, offer scholarship to the young men and women and help them in their future, uh, whether it's in college and, or their future endeavors. And this is our first one, so I'm excited to introduce, introduce this uh scholarship program, our Hawthorne Fallen Heroes Foundation. So it is a memory of Officer Andrew Garten and Sergeant Leonard Luna, both killed in the line of duty. Next slide, please. And it is open to our explorers and also to our Hawthorne uh, uh, power project. So these are young men and women uh in their teens that are volunteering with us and also part of our Hawthorne uh Power Project program. And uh, they've been with us uh, you know, for several years. And through this, we did a selection pro- uh process. Next slide, please. Um, here are some of the, the eligibility and also the selection process here. And through this, we are here proud to announce our first recipient of this scholarship. I want to introduce, next slide. Mr. Jeremy Penya. Now, rather than just me talk about him and show a static picture, I have him here with his family. And I'd like to introduce him. He will be receiving five thousand dollars uh as a scholarship and he is scheduled, I believe, to go to Humboldt State uh, to uh, continue with his career or his education. So, thank you. I'd like to bring Jeremy on. Where did he go? Is he here?
Hi. So good evening, everyone. Um, so just real quick, I just want to give thanks to everyone for taking time out of their day to switch this into, to the meeting. Um, I also want to thank everyone that's here with me right now and assisting me, like the Halt Police Department. I also want to thank the Police Officers Association. Um, this is a fantastic opportunity, really. Um, one that's clearly not been attained by my own efforts. I've received a lot of help from my family members, the explorer advisors, my fellow explorers. They've all helped me throughout this long path. Um, I really couldn't have done this without them. So I try to come, um, just core value, like humble beginnings. My parents, they came from Peru. Um, and, yeah, so. Yeah. So my parents, they come from Peru. They immigrated here to the U S, you know, for a better life, was most um immigrants. Uh, when they came here, they didn't really have much, just um, my dad worked at a hotel for countless years, just um, like a waiter. And then my mom worked at another hotel or uh, like, um, cleaning rooms and all that. Um, and that's kind of just what they did for years until like the Mexican apartment in Hawthorne, so which is why I have strong connection to this city. So I spent ten years of my life living here in Hawthorne, Mendote. So and then later on, we moved. So coming back to Hawthorne, you know, to be part of the police explorers is uh, it's been fantastic, really, for me. I've met a lot of great people here. Uh, so much, um, so much wisdom and all these advisors that are helping me along the way. Um. Um. Yeah, it's just a lot to take in and I'm really, I'm just grateful for all the support I've received throughout all these years. Uh, it hasn't been easy for anyone, really, and especially hasn't been easy with this pandemic. Yeah, so I'm, I'm just blown away receiving this award. It's a great help for, for my family just because I'm all the siblings, so then my younger siblings have to walk in my footsteps, you know, go to university and have to worry about financial aid and all that. So just me receiving this award is a great relief, not to myself only, but to my family members. Because, you know, that's less money that they had to pay out of pocket. And, yeah.
Jeremy, um, congratulations. Uh, I personally want to congratulate you and I know the rest of the council and the community is really happy for you. Um, this is a scholarship, so tell it, tell us about your academic goals. I mean, that's what I want to hear about too, you know? What are you gonna do with this stuff? What are you gonna do?
Right, so, um, I guess I'll backtrack so ever since I was little, um. I was watching a lot of C S I shows with my mom. Did my dad be working out till like, till like midnight? So my mom would be home most of the times. Uh, we watched the C S I, C S I shows and that, that really got me into like law enforcement, like, you know, the detective part of like work. Um, so I always had like this uh, this goal, wanting to be like police officer growing up. Um, that's still, still a goal. Um, but I've been looking at like other opportunities, uh, you know, still trying to like, in a way, help the committee and give back. So yeah, I've been looking into like social workers, specifically in the field of adoption, just because there's so much different cases of um of children coming from countless backgrounds. Lord knows what they've gone through. So just me trying to at least help, you know, one kid at a time. It gives me ease of mind that I can, you know, make this world a little better than, you know, what it's struggling to go through right now.
Congratulations very much, uh, Explorer Penya. Congrat- congratulations. Uh, I, I can, we can see your parents are proud and happy. They're there with you. That's like a big thing. Um, it's all about family too, right? So, and you know, your Hawthorne family appreciates it.
Thank you.
Council member Montero, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, and then council member English. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But before we, we proceed, uh, is Chief Ishi's done?
I'm done. He's all yours.
Thank you, Chief. Um, yeah, again, uh, congratulations, uh, Jeremy, uh, for, for be the recipient of this award and um we, you're gonna make us proud, right? Because like myself, I'm an immigrant that came to this country for the uh education and job opportunities. So I understand your background and your family. So I've been in Peru, so I know it's a beautiful country. Uh, but as an explorer, you know, you know what it takes, you know, to be a, a police officer and also to be with the, with the police officer in this challenged time, like you put it very well. So congratulations and good luck on, on your um, university choice, right? A social worker is, it is a tough job. But uh, I take my hat off you because you're gonna do good, because you bilingual, you know, English and Spanish, especially social work, we need those. So, so thank you for select that, that, that career. So it's very, it's very, it's very rewarding. And I want to thank the chief and H P O A, like you said, you know, to bring this scholarship in the honor of the two excellent office uh, that we all know uh, from the past, you know, Andrew Garten and um, Luna. So, you know, it, it gave me a goosebump just to, just to mention their name because it was excellent office. So, you know, it it gave me a goosebump, just to, just to mention their name because it was excellent office. And we lost them so soon, so, um and at least now the scholarship, they will live forever in our hearts and in our minds. Uh of the brilliant kids like you, Jeremy, so thank you very much, I appreciate it, for you to be part of the Hawthorne community, take care.
Uh Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um Jeremy, congratulations, um congratulations on graduating. And congratulations on um your selection of Humboldt State. Um you seem like such a nice young man, you seem so appreciative of the opportunities and support you've gotten. And um it's a pleasure to meet you, I'm sure you're going to be very successful in whatever you do because. Um your, your character really shines through here, so ver- very best of luck to you. And thank you, Chief, for um for this selection, obviously you all spend a lot of time. Making your selections and um you you made a great selection and you really honored our fallen heroes. Um Garten and Luna, and so we thank you all for that, we thank you for giving these scholarships and. Uh providing our students from Hawthorne uh this great opportunity for success. So thank you to the police department, and thank you, Jeremy, and Jeremy's parents, congratulations to all of you. Thank you, you make us all proud.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman English.
Yes, congratulations, Felicidades, uh Mister Penya, congratulations to you. Uh it's a great joy to see the the proudness of your parents behind you. Uh congratulations and and best wishes in all your endeavors. Uh like Councilmember Montero mentioned, uh I too am a a family member. Uh migrant family member of eleven, there's eleven of us, and we migrated from San Antonio, Texas to Idaho. And to be able to just um see the successes in 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 our struggles. Uh is something to be proud of, so I want you to remember that, and most importantly, your name, your name is very important. So keep the Penya name going, be strong, and congratulations.
Councilmember Patterson?
I'll be brief, uh Mister Penya, I wanna congratulate you um. And congratulate you for going to college more than anything else, I know for me, college changed my life, and so. I wish the the same for you, that it has a transformational uh impact on the direction of your life. And so I'm glad to see that you're, you're able to um. Put in some hard work and be rewarded for your hard work and have that carry to the next, next stage of your life.
Okay, so once more, congratulations, Jeremy, congratulations to your parents, Felicidades. And Jeremy, y a tus papas, por tener tan buen hijo. Um so, um good luck, good luck, and let us know and uh make sure you let us know how things are going, coming along, okay? Alright, okay, thank you so much, okay, have a good, have a good rest of your day, night. And we see your little sister, it looks like. Hi. Okay, we're gonna continue with the rest of the meeting, item number five has been pulled. And now we're going to go to the oral communications. Uh Mister Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications, and I think we got some emails, so if you could just describe those as accurately as. Uh as accurately as possible for the record, thank you.
Alright, so pursuant to government code section five four nine five four point three. Our remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have the three, have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the count, at the close of oral communications. To refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and or recommendation.
Um so Mister City Clerk, uh how many people do you have?
So we have five individuals who are speaking, um and Mister Mayor, we also received six emails. Regarding discussion action item number twenty-five, um and the emails will be posted to the City Clerk's webpage for the public to view.
Uh also a question to you, uh Doctor Jimenez, uh and to City Clerk Avalos. Um is there a requirement to describe what the nature of these are, or just uh just that they're. Are going to be entered into the we- the websites for posterity? So, so that's a question. Miss Avalos? Do you dis? Miss Avalos, are you there? Or Mister City Clerk, what is the requirement, to describe the nature of these emails or not?
To my understanding, it was um at, as long as they're posted to the public can view them, okay, that's the minimum requirement.
Okay, thank you, um and just let us know, confirm that, and that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, so go ahead, speakers, please.
Okay, so um the first speaker, um Diana, are you on?
Yes.
And I g- I guess uh Diana, before we go, I guess that's kinda one of the benefits of actually speaking, people are actually taking their time. Um sending an email is kind of uh, i- it is also expressing yourselves, but it obviously the benefit of speaking in person. Um is uh carries its weight a little further even, okay, go ahead.
Okay, we have Ms. Carol Maston on the line, um Carol, can. Can you hear us? Okay, can you hear Carol, Council?
Very lightly. Either you can uh put the speaker, the mic closer to the phone, or if she can speak louder.
Okay, can you hear her now?
Is that any better?
Can you hear?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you now.
Alright, go ahead, Ms. Maston, you have three minutes.
Okay, uh good evening, um city uh Council Mayor Marcus and city council members. Good to see all of you, I haven't seen you in a while, I have a concern about the illegal dumping in in. Uh in Hawthorne, I live at, uh my name is Carol Maston, I live at twenty-four twenty-five, West one hundred and fifteenth Street. And on July twenty-eighth, around six thirty PM, two guys in a U-Haul truck pulled up in the alley behind my home. Along with a third guy in a green truck, began illegal dumping furniture and appliances behind my home on one hundred and fifteenth Street in Cashmere. I called the Hawthorne Police Department Dispatch, and an officer was sent out, and he took an incident report. And informed me to follow up with the code enforcement. I did contact co- code enforcement Chris Burris and send him the video of the illegal dumping activity. I would like to know what is being done about the illegal dumping in my neighborhood. You know, six or seven of my neighbors have installed cameras, and I know that not only myself, but another neighbor sending videos to the city. Uh about this uh, to stop this illegal dumping. I'd like to know what the city is doing to stop the illegal dumping in the alley, are fines being imposed? A follow-up on what has happened to these folks that are dumping illegally in the a- a- alley would be appreciated. I mean, I got a good shot of the truck and the and the truck number and everything, so I know this one can be tracked. To find out who rented this truck and then took it upon themselves to just start dumping down the alley. Also, at one of our monthly Holly Park Neighborhood Association meetings, Lieutenant uh Yoshida informed us that cameras would be installed in our alley. Can I find out when the city will be installing the cameras? When and if the cameras are installed, will they be monitored twenty-four seven or what? Thank you for listening to my concern, and I hope to hear from you soon.
Uh Ms. Maston, we're going to connect you with Vaughn Norris. And our Chief of Police, uh so that they can update you with that proper, that information you requested, since we can't uh. Uh go into that fully right now, since it's oral communications, okay, ma'am?
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Mister Larry Bender, Mister Bender, you have three minutes.
Good evening, uh Mayor and Council, uh my name is Larry Bender, for transparency purposes. Uh I'm a thirty-year member of the Hawthorne Rotary Club, I've run the interact program at Hawthorne High School for thirty years. I've been a thirty-year volunteer, also with Richstone Center Kids Club, and thirty years with um St. Margaret Center. Having worked for the city of Hawthorne as the cable twen- uh cable administrator for twenty-five years, it's the best years of my life. Uh the city has built a wonderful uh vehicle, the cable television station is in better hands now than it ever was. My greatest satisfaction was seeing fourteen and fifteen-year-old summer interns from losing their high school. Given to us by Jan Bogels, all grown up and running the station and taking it uh to greater heights. I remember the city's signature event, the Hawthorne Air Fair, where all nonprofits were given space to sell food, drinks, ice cream and souvenirs. All profited greatly, allowing them to expand their service. Our Hawthorne Rotary Club, we used to make fifteen to twenty thousand dollars selling uh ice cream. Uh I remember the Hawthorne President's Council dinners run by Cora Travers, Anazelle Josephs, Lorraine Guyer, and the Women's Club. Every table sponsored by local nonprofits, seating people they didn't know. Kiwanis Club members like Bob Marcela, Dick Yun, Dennis Wild, Norm Morton, and Bill Salfidi cooked the chicken. Hawthorne provided the punch, youth clubs like Interact, Key Club, Scouts and Cadets served the food and bust the tables. That's when I got to understand the meaning of city of good neighbors. Now we are threatened with losing the last way to raise significant funds to support services for veterans, seniors. Disabled and youth, which the city is unable to support because of the pandemic. Uh funding problems that you may have. All of our nonprofits support the city's concern about stopping use of the illegal fireworks. But we urge you not to eliminate sale of safe and sane fireworks, because you will decimate the ranks. Of longstanding organizations who have given thousands of hours, free time to the city. To do things for all the people that need help. Please, I urge you not to eliminate the sale of safe and sane fireworks. And thank you for the opportunity of addressing you this evening.
Thank you, Mister Bender, you have a good night.
Thank you.
And next speaker, please. Uh Ms. Diana, next speaker, please.
Hi, next we have Mister Mike Salita, hi, Mike, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Uh honorable Mayor and City Council, um I'm calling. Uh like the previous uh speaker, Mister Bender. I um have been fortunate over the last. Seven or eight years to be able to take part in the uh firework stand. And that's been a huge uh project for us, and I think that if you eliminate that. Um you're gonna hurt a lot of nonprofits in the city, you're going to um. Hurt a lot of kids that love the fireworks stand, you know, every year, right around the fourth, the middle of the day, we run out of fireworks. So I don't know, I know that there's uh some loud uh voices, but they're not the majority. You know, the majority of the people love the fireworks stands, uh like the gentleman before indicated. So many nonprofits, you've got the, it helps the soccer, it helps the Little League, it helps Kiwanis, the Moose, the. Rotary, um I mean, it's a, it's a wonderful source of income that. You're just gonna wipe off, you know, I think that you should uh consider that because there's. It's almost like um killing a fly with a sledgehammer, you know, the problem is the illegal fireworks. It's not the legal fireworks, those people. They're usually done by ten o'clock at night, and it's, it's the stuff in the sky that you have to. Uh uh come up with a plan to take care of that. It's not, eliminating the fireworks stands isn't gonna really solve that problem, you know that and I know that. All it's gonna do is it's gonna hurt a lot of nonprofits, and it's going to take away something from the kids that happen that they absolutely love. Which is the fireworks on the Fourth of July, and you know, frankly, uh. We're a community that likes to make a little noise on the Fourth of July, and you know, Cinco de Mayo and. And all that, so that's not gonna go away, that's gonna continue, it's gonna get even worse. And then what's the plan, to send the police to have a confrontation over a firework, uh in today's environment, that's not. The best use of our police department, but eliminating the um, the nonprofit, I mean, the uh. The fireworks stands is not the the right answer, it's gonna hurt more than it's gonna help. Um we've enjoyed that fireworks stand, we've been, uh you know, people say that it's a veteran, that it hurts a veteran, it doesn't. You got two, out of the seven or eight every, every year, three of them are veteran organizations. Um so I don't, I don't understand um what part of that is difficult to to grasp, you know.
Mike, your three minutes are up.
Is that it?
That's it.
Listen, guys, thank you very much, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to uh speak my piece, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh thank you, Councilmember.
Arma.
Councilmember, yeah, former, whatever, Councilmember, thank you. Go ahead.
So next we have Ms. Andrea Santana, uh Ms. Santana, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Andrea Santana, and um I would also like to make a comment on item twenty-five, which is to consider prohibiting the sale. And use of all fireworks, that includes the safe and sane fireworks, while. I understand the loud fireworks a month before and a few weeks after the Fourth of July is not a welcome addition to our city. Especially to our Hawthorne vets and anyone that has hearing sensitivities like tinnitus or even our pets. Especially at one or three o'clock in the morning, when it feels like a bomb is going off next to you. I truly, I truly believe that there needs to be a clear distinction between illegal and legal fireworks. I don't think punishing the residents of Hawthorne by prohibiting the sale of fireworks. For the misuse of citizens that fire off illegal ones is fair nor just. Um it is also not fair to take away the avenue of fundraising that helps our local nonprofits. Which is a major yearly fundraiser that helps sustain a lot of programs. I know my parents participated in many fireworks stands to help raise money for the YMCA and the Masonic Lodge when it appears. And the ability to be selected to have a fireworks stand is some, some, sometimes. A must for some of these nonprofits to be able to compete, uh complete their mission, their vision. Because without it, they just can't achieve their outreach. Uh there are plenty of responsible Hawthorne residents that enjoy legal fireworks and understand there's a time and place to set these off. I don't think that uh they should have to go without because of those that are irresponsible. I understand the need to quell illegal fireworks, but to prohibit everyone for a, for a few people seems unreasonable. I anticipate that the council can come up with a better suggestion than canceling the sale of fireworks altogether. Maybe adding more bike patrols on the week of the Fourth of July, making fines for the illegal fireworks. Very expensive so that it will deter future violations, I do believe there has to be a different solution out there. I urge you to continue to allow the sale of safe and uh safe and sane fireworks. That permits community organizations to provide worthy service projects, along with letting our Hawthorne residents enjoy their Fourth of July. With their family and friends, without having to leave our city and enjoy their holiday elsewhere. Uh by doing that, you also run uh the possibility that a lot of our residents will go and spend their money elsewhere. And not in our city, so please take that into consideration. I hope that you guys can come up with a better solution than uh getting rid of fireworks altogether, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santana, you have a good night.
Next speaker, please.
And next we have um Lelli Fernandez, Ms. Fernandez, go ahead, you have thirty sec- uh three, three minutes.
Uh yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Lelli Fernandez, Hawthorne resident since nineteen seventy-three. I am also speaking on the topic of the safe and sane fireworks. Um as we all know, that this is a nice celebration because of Independence, one of the most important. Documents here in history of the United States, we celebrate with barbecues and fireworks. You have to hear, majority of us stay at home with our families, friends and neighbors to safely celebrate. I don't know what's happening in the city of good neighbors, what's going on, why not focus on the real issue, the illegal fireworks, the lighting up of certain hours? Or even holding the apartment managers and owners accountable for the mess, et cetera, the many kids on the street. Has this been attempted, or is it easier just to stop it? Thousands of nonprofit organization groups use TNT fireworks stands as their primary. Fundraising uh solution, prohibiting the sale and the use of safe and sane fireworks is more of a personal attack. To the nonprofit groups we have, there's nothing here in Hawthorne for entertainment, no malls, outlets, no nice dining. The Fourth of July, Independence Day, are we not Americans? There are other priorities that should be taken into consideration. Take a look at our street abandon business, like Casa Maria, the shopping centers at Prairie and World Spans, or Hawthorne on one hundred and eighteen. Auto shops taking over residential parking, there is where ordinances need to be upgraded. Remember the promises you made when you were voted in, for the veteran Hawthorne, Lelli Fernandez, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
That is the end of public comments.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. All right, thank you. Uh, if there is nobody else willing, uh, wanting to speak, I'll declare oral communications closed order. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can we have the consent calendar, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are five items on the consent calendar. Items eight to ten, and items thirteen and fourteen for your consideration and approval. Item eight, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting of July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and the special meeting of July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Item nine, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item ten, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item thirteen, resolution number eight-two-nine-three, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing a two-hour parking restriction from five AM to nine PM, Saturday through Sunday on the south side of one hundred and sixteenth Street from Gavilla Avenue to eighty-five feet west of Hawthorne Boulevard. Item fourteen, resolution number eight-two-nine-four, resolution ordering the summary vacation of a portion of Acacia Avenue between one hundred and sixteenth Street and the cul-de-sac on Acacia Avenue in the City of Hawthorne, California, pursuant to the public, street, highways, and service easements law, Division Nine, Part Three, California Streets and Highways Code for adoption. Mr. Mayor, may I have your, um, may I have your motion to approve items eight, nine, ten, thirteen, and fourteen, please?
I move.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
We're going all the way up to fourteen, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, yes, yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Item fifteen is public hearings, and we don't have any today. Uh, item number sixteen is, are the ordinances? We do not have any today. Uh, so now, next we're going to be talking about general matters, which is item number eighteen, and we're going to get an update from Finance Director Felice Lopez on the American Rescue Plan. Go ahead, Felice.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and Council, thank you for the opportunity to bring you an update on the American Rescue Plan. We have our consultant, Barry Foster from HDL, who's gonna give us um more details on what um we have going on. But we did want to um let you know that we have received the first half of the funding of fifteen point two million, so that is now in the city's account. And we are excited to move forward and, and uh put together some of these projects to help out the community. And I'll have Barry go ahead and, and move on with, with his pres, with his presentation.
To the chair real quick before we do that, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, uh, Felice, I'm looking at the agenda, uh, the booklet. There's nothing, you know, for us to look at. Is, should we have something in our hands to?
There should be an agenda bill along with the um survey that we are going to be sending out to the business owners um to get their um input on some of the items that maybe they have gone through, some of the difficulties that they have gone through during the pandemic.
Got it. Okay, it's uh, it's, it's in the wrong place, so okay. I have, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Felice, um, Mayor and Council. Um, wanted just to give you a, um, a quick update of, of where we're at with um ARPA. Um, as Felice talked about, you've got your first allocation of fifteen point uh two-six million dollars, I think is a great thing. And so um one of the first things that we did was help staff um go ahead and calculate the, the revenue loss per ARPA um guidelines. And so um we mentioned that at our last um update with you, and we've confirmed that that calculation um is correct. So the, what ARPA allows you to do is look at, at general fund revenue loss that you, that um a city, um Hawthorne has experienced. And so you're allowed to look at that for four, four distinct periods of time. One is for twenty-twenty, one is for twenty-twenty-one, uh, twenty-twenty-two, and then twenty-twenty-three. So for, for uh the year twenty-twenty, we actually have actual revenues, so we can, we're able to calculate what that general revenue fund loss was. And so um you're allowed to, to do, look at what, what Hawthorne produced in terms of revenue pre-pandemic, and then you're allowed to do a calculation based on, on growth. And um, so we've gone ahead and, and we've done that. And the loss for twenty-twenty is um seventeen point two-eight million dollars. And so ARPA um allows you to um, to take all of that, that exceeds your, your allocation. Um, you can take all of that, you can take part of that. Um, you, you can defer part of that, whatever is the pleasure of the city council. I think one of the good things about, about moving into the general fund, though, is that you remove some of those restrictions and some of the reporting requirements that you have for ARPA. And so you're allowed to use that money for any general government services. And so it gives the city a little bit more flexibility. What we're recommending for our, our clients, though, is if you move a percentage of that to the general fund, that you're targeting what you're gonna do with that money, so that you can still demonstrate to the community, especially your business community, um, that you were able to um distill fund um ARPA-related programs and, and, and programs that really better the community. So the, the, the first thing that we, that we would like to suggest is just that the council give us some direction on, on how much of that general fund revenue loss that you wanna take now, and then you can defer part of it later. And then you, you could have subsequent revenue loss um in the next three years. I don't think it's gonna be as, quite as um high as it was during twenty-twenty. Hopefully, its recovery continues to, to fold out and, and continue to happen. Um, so you could take, and I just, I just threw a few numbers in the staff report. Um, one is you wanted to take fifty percent of it. That would equate to um a little over six, seven point six million dollars. And if you wanted to take seventy-five percent of the general fund loss, um, that would be um eleven million um point four-four. Um, and so again, you, you can use whatever percentage that the council um wishes to do, and then you can defer some of that to a later time. But you're still able to, to go ahead and um, and, and do programs related to recovery. And it's just you, you relax some of those restrictions on meeting to the T, um, the ARPA requirements, and then you relieve some of the reporting requirements, too. So you're allowed to do just general government services. So that's the first thing that we're asking you to do tonight. And I'm just gonna kind of move on and talk about it a little bit, and then we'll come back to the revenue loss um, uh, part after my presentation. So the um, on, on page six, we've listed a number of different um activities that would qualify for ARPA. And so we're, um, you can fund those out of your general fund with the revenue, um, shifting the revenue loss, um, or you can do it out of ARPA. Um, and so um, we're not asking for, you know, clear direction tonight. We're just, again, trying to whet your appetite and, and talk about things that um, that could be funded through ARPA. And so one would be to do uh small business emergency relief grants. Uh, another one be, would be to help local restaurants to enhance the outdoor dining um facilities that they have. A lot of restaurants had to go and, 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 and make do with outdoor temporary uh parklets and other kinds of outdoor dining. Um, after a period of time, you wanna make those a little bit more permanent. So as we get to recovery, to hopefully get out of this pandemic, that um, we wanna make sure that, that we've got the, the proper amenities for, for restaurant outdoor dining that are a little more permanent, and, and, and people are wanting to go out to those environments. Um, doing it temporarily like we had to do during the past year or so, had to make do with those, but looking at making um some more permanent um outdoor dining experiences. Um, also job training. I think there's a lot of opportunities um in Hawthorne for job training. Um, restaurants specifically, uh, that they're having a real difficulty in finding employees as they open back up again and are taking patrons and customers back in, um, getting sufficient numbers of employees. And so you could do some um, some job training um for, for businesses in Hawthorne, um, and, and for people that live in Hawthorne. Um, food assistance, uh, certainly there's a need for that in the community. Affordable housing, and then homelessness support. All those, I think, would, um, they certainly qualify under ARPA. And I think there's a, there's a great, there's a high need to have those kinds of services. Um, uh, also on the list is to upgrade city-owned properties to ensure um COVID-nineteen compliance. And, you know, looking at, at ventilation systems, looking at, at, at trying to make sure that people stay healthy and as we start to open things back up again. Um, and then we've got uh homeless services, I mentioned that before. And then the last bullet we've got there is a telehealth van, health van that um would allow you, where the city would contract with um professionals to go in and, and offer that up to um, to residents. And so you would have professionals going out and helping folks um with health-related problems. Uh, so these are just some of the things that we wanted to, to continue to whet your appetite with um as, as council members. I think prior to, to going and really figuring out what you wanna do with these kinds of programs, um, at the last update that we provided you, and we've done this in a number of other cities, and we're doing it in a number more, I think it would be, would, would be really helpful to do a business recovery survey, to, to go out and do it to the business community, do it online. And so attached to the, to the staff report, um, and we've done this uh in San Leandro. We just kicked off one in Lafayette, um, up in the Bay Area. Um, and then we're working on two or three more right now. And so what we tried to do is, is do fourteen or fifteen fairly easy-to-answer questions. And so we wanna make sure that, that we're getting as many of the, of the business community to really provide their thoughts and, and their feedback on how they've been damaged by this pandemic and, and uh, and, and COVID-nineteen and everything going along with it, and, and continue to have problems with it. But how they've been damaged, if they've had any kind of financial assistance and what they've been able to do, um, wanna kind of find out what, what that business does. Um, but then what kind of things can the city help um prioritize with this ARPA funding um to, to really make the biggest benefit to the business community, to help them recover now? And then on, into the future? So I think you've got a real opportunity here to take these funds and leverage them into, um, in helping recovery now. But then over the next year or so, and to continue to help that. And that, and that's gonna help um recover the business community, stabilize the business community. They've all been through the most difficult time that they've ever faced in terms of running businesses and everything that they've had to encounter with this pandemic. And so we really wanna, wanna get their thoughts and ideas on how the city best can help them. So um, so we've got um the survey. We'd love to get your feedback on that. Again, we wanna make it simple and easy for them to, to do it. And we've done it other places where we offer up a hundred dollar gift card, so they get, they get put in there, and, and we'll draw one, just to try to entice them to go ahead and do this survey. But um I think that will then give us um some uh, some data and some thoughts and some feedback on um how best to structure these programs, um, that really better the, the community. And so um, you know, with that, um, I think we'd like to try to get some of your, um, some direction from the council on how much you wanna do in terms of the revenue loss, and then talk about the business servant.
Councilmember uh Reyes English, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, and Councilmember Montero, you had your hand up previously, you took it down.
Yeah, I, I, I'll go, I'll go after the ladies. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember English, Mayor Pro Tem, and then Councilmember Montero. Go ahead, ladies.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh thank you, Mr. Foster and, and uh Ms. Lopez. Uh, so from what I understand with regards to um reimbursing the city, right? Reimbursing the city back, we could either take it this time uh out of this uh money that was received here recently, or we could choose to do that at the latter, which would be the, the, the last funding source, obviously, to complete the thirty million, correct?
Yeah, so you're, you're gonna have, you got half of it now, you're gonna have another half um approximately a year from now, probably the end of next July. Um, or it doesn't have to be an all or nothing, you can do a percentage of it, too. And so again, as I, as I commented, I think a, um, a lot of our um clients and communities that we're serving, um, I think moving a, a good part into the general fund, um, it relieves some of those restrictions and trying to have to comply a hundred percent with ARPA and the reporting requirements. But, but we're not advocating just moving it into the general fund. We're advocating um doing it with targeting some other things that you wanna do, that you might typically do um through the ARPA monies. Um, but, but you're doing it through the general fund, so. But there are some things that you can, you can do that might better the community if you move it to the general fund that you can't do with ARPA. So like um street improvements. Street improvements are not eligible um under ARPA. So if you, if you wanted to do that, um, you know, park improvements, other kinds of things, I think, would be um, ARPA's gonna allow some park improvements, but not maybe a hundred percent. So we're, we're looking at just, and, and the parks have been a lot of strain in terms of use during the pandemic. So I think they need some, need some care and upgrades. And so I think there's a lot of things that you can do by moving that money to the general fund or some percentage. But really, it's, it's at the direction of what the council wants to do.
Okay, a couple of other uh comments I have, and then um some feedback, please. Um, I like the, uh, the business recovery survey because I had a question with regards to, um, you know, the small business emergency um applications that we're supposed to have businesses apply for assistance. I, we don't know how many have applied, how many, if that information is even out yet. Um, so that's good because uh as far as maybe a, a, a survey of sorts, because right now, as it is, I, I don't know how many businesses have applied for that and are looking for assistance from us. So that's important. The other thing is, um, I recently visited various departments, and I asked staff from all departments to submit their uh wish list of sorts to the city manager. Uh, having said that, can we do um cross-training and, and with regards to employees, cross-training, uh, customer service, things that we've been talking about, improvements to City Hall? Can some of the funding be used for training and, and things like this?
We'll have to look at some of the training aspects, some of the improvements to City Hall and other facilities, that as long as they can relate to COVID and, and health standards and all those kinds of things, absolutely. We'll have to kind of look at, um, at some of those training, and, and we have to be able to tie those back. Again, it, some of those things could actually be done through the general fund. If you're moving that money, you don't have to then go through the exercise of making sure that's a hundred percent ARPA compliant. So it gives you a, a lot of flexibility. Um, but again, we're just, we're advocating that you not just move the money, but that you, you have some thought and some idea and targeting and what you wanna do with that money. If you're gonna move, uh, you know, let's, let's just say you're gonna move ten million dollars, what are you gonna do with that? And so I think that it would be important to have um some targets on how you wanna spend that money.
Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, and then Councilmember Montero.
Yes, um, so I like what you said uh about uh the fact that we would have more flexibility if we moved the money into the general fund. So I think I would like to see seventy-five percent of it moved into the general fund. Um, and as far as the, what we're going to do with it, I think that depends on the feedback I think we get from, from some of the things we need to be looking at. So from the survey, um, we need to market the survey really well and get it out to as many businesses as possible. And once we get the, the survey back, um, we'll have a very good idea of how, how much is being requested from our businesses, or how, how much of this money um we will need to use to help our businesses. One of the things I noticed in the survey was you didn't ask the question, how much money are you requesting from the city? I think that's an important question to ask because um we don't want, we, we want to get some idea of what it is they need. And if they're, if they don't need that much, we want to know that, too. And if they need a lot, we want to know that, too. But I think we need to ask them, how much are you, how much money are you requesting from the city? Not to say we're going to give it to them, but just to get an idea of how much they, they think they need.
Well, let us, let us take and kind of frame that question. Um, I don't think you wanna open the door wide open and this, but, but I also think that we're also asking for how much, how much loss, how much revenue loss have they had in their business? That's kind of another way to go ahead. So, but I, I think that, I think we go ahead and put something together in, in terms of a, a, a dollar figure range or whatever they're looking for that could help them out.
Yes, I think we should ask, you know, at least, at least have an idea, ballpark figure, of how much they need. Now, um, the other thing I wanted to say is, I was looking at some of the things that we, we could use the COVID money, uh, use the ARPA money for. Ventilation, I think, would be very important for our buildings. Now, um, am I correct that we could use the money for ventilation to help protect our um, our staff from COVID infection? We probably can use, we could probably use it, use the ARPA money directly for that, or we could use it out of the general fund for. or we could use it out of the general fund for that, am I correct? Either one?
Either one of the correct.
And so that's one thing I would like to see. The expansion of the South Bay Fiber Network so that if our student, so that our students in the future would be able to have internet, good internet service. We already have started with the South Bay Fiber Network. We have, we have one facility that is already outfitted based on the South Bay Fiber Network. And broadband is going to be very, broadband is very popular with the government. So there's going to be a lot of government resources available for broadband. So I'd like to see some of that money used for that. So am I correct that we could use the money, that that would be, the money would be eligible from either the ARPA funds or after we move it into the general fund, we could use it for that as well?
It's, there's specifically, they say ARPA identifies Wi-Fi broadband. And so that does, there's some, there's some requirements, you need to go back to speeds and those kinds of things, and I'm not a public works person, but we can figure that out. Or then you could also do it out of the general fund if you're moving some money there too. But, you know, or that could even be something that you pursue later on. If you need to go ahead and kind of master plan for some more of that, you could do that next year. The beauty of this is you don't need to spend all your money now. You've gotten, you've got, you've got until the end of 2024 to actually allocate money. And so you've got some time to do that. And then you have until the end of 2026 to actually expend the money or give it back. And nobody wants to give it back.
Right, yeah, so that would be my recommendation, that we, that we put seventy-five percent of it into the general fund and use the balance for whatever we determine are the needs based on the information, the feedback we get back from our businesses. And also after we look at how much it would cost for ventilation, for ventilation upgrades and for expansion of broadband. So that's what I would be looking at, thank you. And thank you for your, thank you for your report.
Yeah, and I think Vaughn and the staff have put together some numbers in terms of ventilation, some of those upgrades and other things. So I think they've, they really have started that work already.
Councilmember Montero, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Foster, for your update and report. I do agree with Ms. Valentine that we should move seventy-five percent of this fifteen million to our general fund so we can have that flexibility that you have mentioned. So we can put in different programs as we come up with our priorities. But I agree with this survey, it's pretty good to ask the small business and nonprofits and other businesses out there, you know, how COVID impacted business. So that will give us a clear picture of our community, how they struggle for this best almost a year and a half. I do agree that maybe we should concentrate also not just, you know, for the, to improve our ventilation and the Wi-Fi, but also to look at the, I do approve, you know, the telehealth. So we already have a contract, so I do agree with that telehealth van. I support for us also to put some money into the helping some people get some food and maybe some transition housing for the homeless. So I agree about the affordable housing and the home support, so it should be some of our priorities. And then we will figure it out after we put this money into the general fund. Maybe then we can come after the survey return, we will come up with some priorities that maybe we should come back and discuss. And maybe we will do like we did before, you know, all of us will select some priorities and then we come up to an agreement for consents, which are these items are more important for us to address immediately. Because like you said, we have until 2024 to spend that other half of the money that will come sometime maybe next year. So, yeah, just, I think we should move seventy-five percent and then come up with a priority of the list that could improve the health of our employees through ventilation, but also to help the community, especially the homeless and the business and the telehealth, I support all of those ideas, thank you.
Councilmember Patterson, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a different recommendation. So my thoughts are we should absolutely shift as much as we can to the general fund. I think we can do up to seventeen million, a hundred percent. I don't think we need to do that right away. My recommendation was to take whatever the balance would be, let's say that's about thirteen million. You remarked this entire thirteen million that we've just received of the fifteen towards items that are overseen by ARPA. And focus on essentially investing that thirteen million into the programs that we decide into the community. And if there's any programs that come up that we need to tap into our general fund in order to cover, then we can receive those funds next year. We have a pretty healthy reserve right now. So if there were something that came up that we want to do that, that we couldn't do it under ARPA's guideline, we could just tap into our general fund this year. Or, I mean, we probably wouldn't even start spending this money until January anyway. We need to tap into the entire general fund this fiscal year. And then that's, and then come July, we're gonna give another fifteen million anyway. We don't repay that, that money back to the general fund. It seems like there's a lot of great things that we can do with these funds and serve in our community. I think it'd be a good idea for all of us as a council, each individual, to come up with our own top three to five things that we think we should focus on, maybe more. I don't have a specific number, a particular number in mind. The city manager kind of compile, compile that list of what are the different things that staff and council would like to devote these monies to. And then like we did before, kind of collectively identify the top, whatever, five or ten items that we would like to focus on. And once we've identified that top five, ten, fifteen, whatever that number is, items that we want to focus on, we can ask staff to make recommendations for the allocation of funds to each particular item. And specifically, I want to say I would love to use some of these funds for affordable housing and affordable ownership opportunities if possible, so I want to throw that up there.
Okay, Councilwoman English, are you, are you, do you still, you have your hand up? All right, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think this is something you and I shared. I want to know about our local restaurants, how they're, how they're doing with regards to enhancing the outdoor dining. I haven't, I've been driving around the city, I've been seeing some restaurants are not taking advantage of it. And I know we waived fees so that they could be able to have that experience outdoors. And I did mention in previous council meetings that some would be able to benefit where others would not because they don't have the adequate spacing available to them. And then the other concern is, you know, folks leaving, running and not paying their bill. So there needs to be an assessment of sorts. I like the business recovery survey, but I also want to maybe include something similar to ask those restaurants on whether or not the dining experience outdoors is something they're currently doing or not, and if this is something that is of interest to them. I think, I think just adding that if we can would be ideal. And as much as, as much as we could move into the general fund, I think is helpful and the recommendation that's been mentioned here so that we could then be able to have that available to us and ultimately make the selection in a consensus format here of those priorities for how we're going to use those dollars. But I'd like to see some more implemented surveys. And then again, I don't know, Vaughn, where are we with regards to have we gotten the word out to the businesses on monies available? I haven't heard anything, I haven't seen anything, I don't know what the application looks like, if there is an application. We don't have any idea where we're at with that. So if we could report back at some point how we are gonna do that and ultimately which department is going to handle the application process, that's another thing. Thank you.
All right, so what is the direction, what is the consensus on direction that we've, we're giving to the, to our staff? Any feedback? What's the percentage of the monies that we're going to be putting to our general fund? Go ahead, Councilwoman Montero, you have, you want to someone else?
Yeah, thank you. Let me ask Mr. Foster a quick question, then maybe I would, I would make a motion for something. Talking about the broadband and the Wi-Fi, it's my understanding, because since you've been following up the politics in Washington DC, right? They passed that infrastructure bill from the Senate, now it's going to the House. There is money there for broadband and Wi-Fi coming down the pipe if the House approves that bill, correct?
There is some there, and while there's a lot of different infrastructure projects that would be qualified, there's some that are not eligible under ARPA. And so a lot of road projects and other kinds of things would be specifically part of that, that focus for the new, the new infrastructure bill. It's been watered down quite a bit from what it was going to be originally, but we're hopeful that they get something passed.
Yeah, okay, so, okay, thank you, Mr. Foster. So to me, Mr. Mayor, that, that since flexibility, how to use this money is better with the general fund and then we can come up with our list of priorities. I do, like I said, I agree with Ms. Valentine, that I make a motion that maybe we, seventy percent of that, this fifteen million dollar goes to the general fund. And then the other twenty-five, it would be for programs that is tailored to the HARP. But just make sure that seventy-five percent of that money doesn't mean that we're going to put into some, you know, nonsense. So we're going to come up with program that is almost like the guidelines from the American Rescue Plan, but, but, but same time with a much better focus that we could do better project than the mandate from the federal government.
Yeah, I have a real quick question for Mayor, Mr. Barry Foster, Mr. Foster. So the limit on how much we can transfer over to the general fund is, it could have been a hundred percent? Or is there, is that the upper limit, the seventy-five?
Well, you can, you can do a hundred percent, but your, your allocation, your allocation is only fifteen point two six million. So your loss was, was over seventeen. So if you, if you wanted to, you could move the entire fifteen point two six million. Or you could do seventy-five percent and you don't lose it, you could still defer to next year.
So that, so the motion, go ahead, make the motion.
Yeah, I make the motion that we move seventy-five percent.
Second.
Seventy-five, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I concur. Roll call vote, I guess. Councilmember Patterson?
No.
That's a no?
It's a no.
Okay, no, that's fine, Councilwoman English?
To be honest, I'm kind of still have questions and I'm not sure on where I stand. Because from what, Mr. Foster, if you could just one more time, if we, if we do an allocation more than seventy-five percent, how much more can we do with that going fully a hundred percent? And the reason why, yeah.
You can do whatever you want, any amount that you want. Up to, up to the, up to the fifteen point two six million dollars at your first allocation.
But it's my understanding that if we do, say for instance, seventeen million to the general fund, we then can tap into that money for programs and things that we ultimately want to do?
Well, you can't do seventeen, you have seventeen, you only have fifteen million point two six now. And you can, you can defer that, that last couple of million dollars to next year if you wanted to move the full a hundred percent allocation that you have now.
So eleven million, eleven million is the seventy-five percent?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's, whatever number the council can have consensus on and provide direction on.
And so the seventy-five percent that we're gonna ultimately agree to and that remainder money, the HARP money, what are we doing, what are we gonna do with that?
We'll, we'll look at, we'll do the business survey and look at more needs and then come back to the city council with, with a plan to spend the rest of that first, that allocation if you're only doing seventy-five percent now. And then, and then we'll look to then next year come back with, look at what to do with your money with the next tranche, which will come probably almost, almost a year from now. But again, if you don't, if you don't move all of that seventeen million dollars, you can, you can't, you're only up to fifteen point two six. If, whatever percent you send, you move, you can defer the rest of it to next year. You're not saying I'm not ever gonna use it.
And one last thing, well, we've had discussion previously with regards to grants to businesses. We included micro businesses, I don't see that here. Can micro businesses be included? These are businesses that are, you know, arts, music, I mean, there's other businesses that suffered also and that's, that's the micro businesses.
Yeah, so I think when we do, when we do, when we do the survey, I think we want to get it out to as many people as possible and as many businesses as possible and to see how they've been harmed and damaged and impacted. And, and again, that's, that's the pleasure of whatever the city council wants to do in terms of those grants.
And ultimately, can the city also tap into the food bank and do additional food assistance distributions with these dollars?
Correct, you could, you could do it if you, under the, under the general fund, or you could do it as part of ARPA.
And we could also include homeless services, homeless support, wraparound services. This is, this could include contracts with other organizations and groups that help in these efforts, correct?
Yeah, there might be a nonprofit or something that's doing those too, and you can talk about having them be another entity. So a lot of flexibility. But again, I think there's a, there's a great need for that, and I think you're right, I think that would be something. But again, I think we want to get the survey out and really get a little bit more information before we figure out exactly what we're gonna do with that.
Thank you, I have a better understanding now, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, just for, for all of you to understand that, that the reason that we're moving the seventy percent of that fifteen million to the general fund is just to have more flexibility. It doesn't mean that we're going to be spending in some other nonsense programs. We're going to do it based on the American Rescue Plan, but we're gonna do it in a smart way. So we can have much more flexibility to do programs that maybe the HARP would say, no, you cannot do that. So at least we got some flexibility, but we're going to try to accomplish the goal of the legislation that came from Washington DC that is the American Rescue Plan should focus on a specific issues. And that's what we're going to do, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. I made still the motions on the floor.
I seconded it.
Okay.
Yeah, I still don't think that we need to move seventy-five percent to general fund. We can choose a hundred percent of this money or thirteen million of this money for ARPA purposes and wait till next year and take that fifteen million dollars to put in general fund next year. There's no, no rush to put the money in general fund.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I tend to agree with that. I think we should have the guidelines specifically for this first half delineate what we can use this for. So I want to defer that movement till next year.
We're going to do all the same things that we're going to do regardless if we move the money to the general fund or not. So it's a matter, just a math, you know, mathematics, but we're gonna use that money anyway to do the programs that we think is needed in our community. So we're not gonna keep that money in our general fund. So I go either way to tell you the truth. Because, you know, if you want to spend that fifteen million dollar right away, we can do that.
The reason why I say that is because we may not choose to spend that fifteen million of general fund money on these items that were being discussed. We might want to keep five million of that, just give it in general fund.
Not on my watch.
Okay, whatever people want, I'm speaking. Right, we may have, want to keep some of that money in our general fund. We may want to invest it in the infrastructure of the city, right? We may want to, you know, hire some more employees with that money, we want to do a whole lot of stuff though, but shake your head all you want, huh? But let's take the first fifteen million dollars, right, and have it totally dedicated towards ARPA design items. The next fifteen million dollars, we can choose to do whatever we want to do with, whether it be more ARPA stuff. The next fifteen million dollars, we can choose to do whatever we wanna do with, whether it be more ARPA stuff or not.
Yeah, I I I I wanna defer, I wanna defer the movement till next year. And uh just use the AR- ARPA guidelines to define what we do with this first half. That's what my original intention was.
That's fine with me, Mr. Mayor, so you'll you'll have my vote either way.
But the the question, um again, uh are we hindering anything that we might have already?
Flexibility.
Yeah, well, are we hindering anything by delaying till next year?
Because if we wanna spend our, the money on something that's outside of the ARPA guidelines, we have money in general fund to do so anyway, we can reimburse ourselves. When we get fifteen million next year. So.
Okay.
It doesn't really restrict us that much, we're probably not gonna spend anything until twenty twenty-two anyway. And come January, not January, I'm sorry, July of twenty twenty-two, we'll get another fifteen million.
So there's a a motion, there's a second, and I believe there's a roll call in motion, right?
Well, I, uh based on our discussions, so I I probably with the. Retrieve my motion, because like I said, after me, I want this money fifteen million dollar. To to go to program that was laying out on the HARP guideline. So my thing to move the money for general funding was to give us more flexibility. That doesn't mean that we're going to hire staff or create some different program from the from the Mars instead of the Earth, no. But if that's the, is that the ideal, to spend this fifteen million dollar on the programs now, I I'm all for it. Because that, I mean, you know, cuz I want that money to be spent on on programs that is laying out by the by the HARP. And also by the needs of the Hawthorne's community.
Yeah, let's require us to spend this fifteen million dollars on ARPA stuff. By putting it in general fund, it gives us the flexibility to spend it on whatever we feel like it.
Okay, yeah, that's, I I would rather.
Sorry, Ms. Valentine, I retract my motion, so.
You wanna re, you wanna reword word it?
Well, there's there's no motion to be had, there's a consensus to delay it to next year. You have that movement, so I mean, we don't need a vote like with the roll call or anything. So, okay, so uh interim city attorney and uh, do you have that noted, sir? Uh and Vaughn?
Well, uh just Mr. Mr. Mayor, just a, just a little bit to give you a little bit uh thing to think about. Next year. We will got the other half of fifteen million. Uh it still would not be one hundred percent of we have lost in twenty twenty. And then we might have some other loss from twenty twenty-one or maybe twenty twenty-two, and. There will not be enough money there for us to to recoup. So just keep that in mind. Correct, Mr. Foster?
You're you're muted, sir?
Yeah, we can't, we can't predict what's gonna be the future in those other three years, whether there's gonna be revenue loss or not, it really depends on. On on the recovery and everything else, and certainly we didn't anticipate this new variant with the Delta and. It, which is kinda slowing things a little bit, so it's really hard to predict. Right now, I think they're predicting a fairly robust recovery, but there's a lot of different factors that go into that, it's it's hard to. It's hard to tell what this, these other three years are gonna be in terms of revenue loss.
And the agenda that the point is that even when we got the second ra- half of this money, it's still. Uh was not be one hundred percent from what we lost in twenty twenty. That's my 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 main point, to to keep it clear.
Alright.
Can I just one more, one more time, Mr. Foster? If I remember correct, you said you're helping other cities, other other cities municipalities uh going through the same thing. Can you, can you just briefly share uh some of the things that other municipalities are doing with the current population such as ours?
I think that uh. San Leandro, which is up in the Bay area, next to Oakland, is probably the closest in terms of uh your population, maybe the. The demographic makeup and everything else, and so um they're moving um. They're moving a hundred percent of their general fund revenue loss, um but they've got, they've identified what they're gonna do. With that money, and and so um and and then we've got some some other communities are doing. You know, percentages, um again, you don't need to do seventy-five or a hundred, you can do whatever it is that you wanna do, and if you're not using all of it now. You're not giving it up, you can do, you can defer to other years, really, it's it's the uh. It's at the discretion of what the council wants to do, the the purpose of trying to move money to general fund though is, is it just gives you. As a number of customers have said earlier, it gives you maximum flexibility, not just to move it and spend it, but to move it and then figure out what you wanna do with it.
Okay, I'm 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 going to go ahead and pose this. Uh I mean, we got, we we brought you, Mr. Foster, uh on board, and uh Vaughn Norris, he's our interim city manager. It's like, whatever you guys wanna do, whatever you guys wanna do. I think you guys could have given us some tentative idea as to what the needs of our city are and how this could be laid out, so that, so that we can review that. And uh see what the possible usages for this are based on staff recommendation as well. I mean, you guys are living it up to us, I think you're just telling us what the rules are, Mr. Foster, I would have expected maybe you to work with our city manager to kinda. Like I'm saying, give us a general idea, uh Mr. Norris?
Yeah, make some recommendations to us.
Yeah, because I think I think we did on page six, we have seven, eight items there for session.
No, exactly, no, but the, this movement of money based on our forecast of where we might be. I mean, council member, I mean, I wanna give credit to everybody on the council for like. I mean, we got somebody over here that's telling us that, you know, uh, you know, we want maximum flexibility, we don't, we don't know where we're at. Uh wh- where we might be, and then we got a a council member Patterson who wants to put all this stuff to use. Uh as to, as a delineated by the uh ARPA guidelines. But you guys gotta give us some general ideas to what, what is your forecast for the city? For example, how much did we, uh how uh what's the uh loss of income? Uh revenue for the city in this last like year and a half? Can somebody give me what that has been?
So, so for clarification, uh Mr. Mayor. What Mr. Foster has stated is that for just year twenty twenty, the loss of revenue from the city was seventeen point two million. And there's a total of thirty million that we are to receive, fifteen point two million this year, and another balance of fifteen million next year. If we are dedicating the entire fifteen point two million from this year to ARPA program and not put into general fund. Then what you have is balance of fifteen million, we're not gonna fully recoup the revenue loss from just year twenty twenty. In addition to that, we're gonna have additional loss from fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and. We can presume additional loss to continue twenty twenty-two. What Mr. Foster is saying is that we dis- the city council decide on the percentage to put into general fund. Give more flexibility at this point. So I think the the staff will need clarification in terms of moving that money, do we really wanna put? All fifteen point two million into into ARPA instead of shifting to general fund. Which means that next year, when we get fifteen million, that won't even cover the total revenue loss for the city from twenty twenty. And we're co- gonna continue to suffer additional revenue loss for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
So for example.
You, Robert.
It is though.
Councilmember Patterson, let me, let me just, I, let me just finish, you'll you'll be next, sir. So uh and then a council member, uh Montero. Uh so, so you're saying that even if we put a hundred percent, which would have been that fifteen million, we would have, uh the whole hundred percent, we would still need to. Submit a portion of the next allotment in order to cover our seventeen million, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
That, okay, so. Yeah, I'm re- I'm willing to reassess this, uh so go ahead, go ahead, uh council member. I do wanna sp- so that's why the seventy-five percent. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Montero, and then.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Robert Kim, for 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 saying exactly what that I said about five minutes ago. Cuz that was my point, okay? Uh because I don't know what you guys, I I I, are we on a different meetings? Cuz I already explained to you exactly what Robert have said and what Mr. Foster have said. And 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 now, okay, maybe I'll speak the English, yeah, English was my fifth language, but at least I know I I can communicate at least. So I don't know, I don't understand where we are now, because 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 if you think about it, we said the same thing about ten minutes ago. And that's what the recommendation was to move seventy-five percent to the general fund, so we can have much better flexibility. Because like I said, the fifteen point two six million is not even enough to pay us. The the seventeen million that we lost in twenty twenty. And then next year, we'll get another fifteen million, it would not be enough, because we would have a a core additional revenue loss from twenty twenty-one. Uh i- it's a simple math. Come on, that's what I'm saying, we live on Earth, not in, not in Jupiter.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson and then Councilmember English.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Barry.
Okay.
Uh if we um take fifteen million from this allocation, the whole fifteen million, let's say, put in our general fund. Are you saying next year's fifteen million will probably do the same thing, because we'll be incurring more loss?
I can't say that, um I, but there, you have to calculate what, what kind of revenue you have next year. I don't think there's anybody that anticipate that. I think there's gonna be recovery, but you just never know, so I I don't think that the revenue loss. Will be as pronounced in twenty twenty-one as it was in twenty twenty, because we're seeing recovery already. We're seeing recovery in sales tax and other, and uh property tax and other types of revenue, so. You know, there certainly can be um a revenue loss next year. I don't think it's gonna be quite as pronounced as it was in twenty twenty.
So we have a total amount of thirty million dollars, the question is, how much are we gonna be to shift to the general fund, that's essentially the question. And based upon how much we shift this year will impact how much we can shift next year to the general fund. Is that correct?
Correct, and again, that's it's 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 the council's discretion and and.
And so we can choose to restrict how we spend money or not.
You always have that, you always have the ability to do that.
Right, got it, and so if we take, say, thirteen million allocated towards. ARPA restricted items and the other two million towards general fund, will we not be able to take the fifteen million next year and put it towards general fund?
No, you can, you can do it next year too.
So I don't, I don't understand what the problem is, right, we'll, the my recommendation is taking seventeen million dollars put in general fund, question is, when do we do it? Right, we can put two million this year and fifteen million next year to the general fund. And then take, have the full thirteen million that we are required to use in a specific way.
Yeah, again, if you're, if you're moving a percentage or amount or whatever it is to the general fund. The best part of doing that is you're, you're providing uh the ability to still use those monies, but you don't have to. You don't have to comply a hundred percent with all the ARPA requirements, you don't have to, you know, to do all the reporting and everything else that comes along with those. Monies that you're spending it on, it gives you that maximum flexibility, but again, that's the.
Is that costly?
Uh, no, it's not costly, I mean, you just, you have to, you, we're gonna have to, the first, the first report is due um. Actually, the end of this month, and so it's it's gonna be a pretty easy one, it's showing what you've done to date. And then there'll be one again in in December, and then you're gonna do an annual one after that, but you have to show that the. If you're, if you're, if you're spending in ARPA things, you need to show the tie to it, that it's qualified, that it's eligible, what's, you're doing with it. All those kinds of things.
So it's just, I I like the idea of having that money earmarked to be spent a certain type of way. So that, uh once it was general funded, it can be used however we choose to use it. And you know, whether it be, they should make sure whatever case might be. Ema for our ARPA restricted stuff, then we have to use it for these items that are are spectacular things to have to use it for. Uh and and have to benefit the community, so that's why I make the recommendation I made.
You you still have, the council member, you still have the the ability, even if you move part of it or all of it, or whatever you wanna do to the general fund.
That's true, but also a majority of the council members can choose to vote to use it in another way, so. Uh this recommendation doesn't allow for that.
Oh, uh Mr. Foster, real quick, uh uh, so if we drop in the seventy-five percent now. Which would, what what the, what is that total, like about?
Uh it's uh eleven eleven point four million.
So if we, if we put eleven point four million, and that's seventy-five percent now, and then we get another fifteen million next year. What's the maximum that we could uh put the the next time around? All of all of that, we could put all of that in there?
So you're, you you can look at, so the eleven point four from your original loss this year of seventeen point two eight million, so. You know, oh, not quite six million dollars, and then whatever loss you're able to show next year.
Okay, so it's it's just limited to the loss.
Yeah, so we're we're, the only, the only, the only actuals we have for revenue are twenty twenty. We're we're just making guessimates on what's gonna happen in twenty-one and twenty-two and twenty-three, and that's based on recovery.
Alright, so I. Um, I am, yeah.
Kent, man, can I?
Uh, yeah, no, I I just, I just wanna just, no, you're next, of course. I just think it's safer to put in what we can right now. Does it have to be seventy-five percent? It might not have to be, it could be fifty percent, but that'll give us an opportunity to give, like. Uh address it later on, but um I do wanna have some part of it earmarked this year. So maybe twenty-five percent of what our allotment is right now would be sufficient, I mean, that's up in the air for me, but uh I do think we should put some this year. Go ahead.
Uh I like the recommendation that be, that's being made at this point, uh we had a choice between a fifty percent or seventy-five percent. I like the seventy-five percent for the, for the reason of the flexibility. And moreover, uh the things that we're trying to do in the community with regards to the community need. And there is still community need, we can't forecast what's gonna happen next year. However, knowing that we have um the flexibility and knowing that we have an additional uh fifteen million coming next year. There's plenty of opportunity here to fulfill the uh, you know, the general fund, we're reimbursing back the ultimate seventeen million. That we're in a loss, so um I'm gonna take the recommendation from Montero and uh. Ask that we just stick to the seventy-five percent, I and I think that's the best route to that we're going in. They have provided the information to us as far as Mr. Foster and Mrs. Lopez is concerned. And provided us the, how we could use these dollars, and that's why we're questioning more and more, what more, how can we use this money? To assure that we use it to the maximum on the needs of businesses, uh organizations and things that we need to address now. And um we, again, we don't know what's gonna happen with this new uh variant or not, that's neither here or there. I I I can't forecast that we're gonna be in a deficit next year again, however, we're present now, and I I I would agree with the seventy-five percent.
Okay, so then I introduce my motion, and that was second by Ms. Valentine. Seventy-five percent of the general fund.
Do we even?
Please call for the vote, please.
There's not even a vote required, Mr. City Attorney, do we need a vote on this?
Um, do we have a consensus or?
There's a, there's a majority, so just take the majority, we don't need a vote on this.
Okay, that's fine.
Votes are not required for this.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Foster, thank you, Feliz.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, uh so, okay, thank you, Mr. Foster, appreciate it, you uh.
Feliz has a question, Feliz?
No, I think we're okay.
Can I, can I, can I?
She's muted, she's talking.
What do you, what do you need, Mr.?
Oh, Mr. Foster had a question.
Yeah, I said one more question, so I I I wanted just to make sure that um that we've got direction then to proceed with the business survey too, with a couple modifications that were presented tonight.
Yes.
Yeah.
I concur, I concur.
I concur.
And to include the micro business as well.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, um um you did do your, you did your, do your work, so uh I kudos to you, okay?
Thank you much.
Uh, Mr. Interim City Manager, the agenda reflects, you have items twenty to twenty-two on the city manager's consent calendar. Please proceed by introducing each of these items into the record, Mr. City Manager.
Item, excuse me, item twenty is an agreement between Union Pacific Railroad Company and the City of Hawthorne. Item number twenty-two is a community cleanup event. Excuse me, item twenty-one is a community cleanup event, item twenty-two is marking on streets. Uh parking spaces, parking tees. And that concludes my um, my items, my consent calendar.
To the chair, Mayor, I have.
I have, I have a motion.
I second.
I'd like to pool discussion, uh item twenty and twenty-two for discussion.
Item which one?
Twenty and twenty-two.
Okay, well, I'll extend you the courtesy. Go ahead.
You.
So, but item, I'll uh re amend my, I'll amend my motion to move on item twenty-one.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Um, yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item twenty, go ahead.
Um, just, just so that, you know. I think it's always fair so that there could be discussion versus just, you know, passing items, and I think that's, that's important. And uh, a lot of discussions that happen are because constituents wanna know. So um, I wanna know for item number twenty, with regards to the Union Pacific Railroad Company and the City of Hawthorne, the agreement. Um, I don't know who's there, Alan, I don't know if it's you. Um, I understand that there's a uh, shared, shared of cost. Between the City of El Segundo and ourselves, and each will be uh, paying a hundred and six thousand for the improvements of the railroad. Uh, closest to um. Uh, obviously, the, where, where we, we're at, the crossing improvements, but I'm looking at the recital. And all it says is, you know, City of Hawthorne and, and the, the railroad. Where's the uh, agreement that there's gonna be a hundred and six uh, thousand coming from El Segundo in support of a shared cost? And then moreover, at the end, uh, page two, uh, after the recital. Uh, there's a phone number, and there's a Monday through Friday, is there, is there, is this the number for constituents if there's concerns? Uh, I don't understand that one.
Um. Let me try to answer, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Potem and City Council. Um, actually, the City of El Segundo is bringing this item to the City Council for approval. Uh, once it's approved by the City of El Segundo, then we will bring another item back. Uh, for your approval to enter into agreement with the City of El Segundo to share the cost uh, for the improvements.
And the number that's on the back, the phone number, commencing, it says any agency work, it's got a phone number Monday through Friday. What's that number? What, what is that about? Number, uh, number six on page two.
Page two, um, yeah, that, that one is uh, mostly for people to have questions, to give uh, a call. Uh, we're going to the projects, so just you give a little bit more information.
And you'll be able to post that online if folks need to know that phone number and the days of the week that they could call?
Positive on number as well.
Okay, and then mayor, if I could go into item number twenty-two for discussion, please?
Well, let's make a motion on item twenty. I make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item twenty-two.
Uh, thank you, Alan, are you there? There you are.
You're here.
You're, you're on the, uh, what is that, the Golden Gate?
Spotlight.
You're on the Golden Gate.
Right, Golden Gate, yeah.
Uh, um, thank you for bringing this item to us, um, it's been something that we've been discussing here at the beginning of the year. Uh, I want you to ultimately know that you have the support and moreover the discretion. And that's important because there's constituents that um, you know, are tired of the bad actors. That are taking up space and saving space, and it's really unfair. And I want you to be able to use discretion, you and your team, and moreover, do a great, uh, a good, I should say, a good assessment. Of how we could utilize additional parking here in our city, but I think this is a start, so thank you for that and bringing this to us, okay?
I make a motion?
Amen, second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes, but I thought we already voted on this.
No, 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 we're going one by one. I extended you the courtesy.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
We won't do it again, this is, if there's a motion, if there's a motion, uh, or a second already, that goes directly into a vote.
So, so that was a yes, Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes, that's a yes.
Uh, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
And um, I've just real quick, super quick comment, uh, Alan, um, and Vaughn, I talked to you guys a couple days ago. And uh, it was great that I heard Alan's explanation of the engineering requirements. In order to lay out the spacings, et cetera, so uh, we're in compliance with state regulations in what you're doing. So thank you and congratulations, Alan and Vaughn, okay?
Thank you.
Right. Item twenty-three is the city attorney's consent calendar, there aren't any items on there. Uh, okay, so let's uh, go ahead into the dis, action discussion items. I think this is pretty much close to the end, let me see, uh. Okay. Okay, go ahead. Item number twenty-three, uh, okay. Item number twenty-five is to consider the amending the ordinance and prohibiting the sale and use of all fireworks, including Safe and Same. Councilmember Reyes, you brought this uh, onto the agenda, uh, it's been put on the agenda prior request, so go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you for the discussion we briefly had today too, with regards to this item. Let me first of all acknowledge all those that have called, uh, thank you for your call to the city clerk's office, thank you, uh. Mr. Bender, it's been a long time since I heard from you, but thank you, sir, and for uh, anyone else uh, that called today. And then also, I'd like to thank the Rotary, uh, Ms. Wilk for your letter, Mr. Florrie for your letter. Mr. Quintana for your letter, Mr. uh, Mr. Barry Colston for your letter, sir. Uh, Mr. Johnny Brown, thank you for your letter, sir, and also Wendy, uh, Min, Min Hiva, Min, Min Hivar. Min Hivar, anyhow, um, thank you for your letters and thank you for um, you know. Uh, your engagement with regards to a discussion on whether or not uh, fireworks should continue. And uh, the reason I brought this item up is because it's been a, a heavy discussion throughout the years, but moreover. Uh, recently during the campaign, I heard from a lot of constituents, a lot of individuals that have uh, expressed concerns, and I think. Uh, they should be heard too, not just those that support fireworks, but for those that have pretty much uh, have had concerns. Um, and are pretty much fed up, uh, but I want the opportunity for um, our chief, uh, Ishi to please report out. Uh, sir, on um, the Fourth of July and what was implemented initially, the two months before, the two months after. With an eight hundred, eight hundred number for residents to call in, thank you.
Sir, thank you. Uh, keep it brief as possible, I wanted to just give a quick update on uh, or summary of our. Uh, the stats we have for the fireworks um, calls that we've had this year. Um, so compared to twenty twenty, uh, fireworks were down, but this is across the city, not only Hawthorne, but across the county. Um, in twenty twenty, we had approximately a little over eight hundred uh, incidents or calls that came in between June first and July fourth. And in twenty twenty-one, this year, we had about approximately two hundred and fifty uh, calls, so it's been significantly lower. There are several factors in that, uh, that we have, uh, that we can see. Uh, one obviously was twenty twenty was an anomaly with uh, the pandemic and the lockdown, everybody being home. And uh, not being able to go anywhere, so this year we had a lot more people out of town. Uh, than in town, and we believe that was uh, uh, one of the factors of having less fireworks uh, uh, calls this year. Um, and then the other one was this year, we, there were several fireworks uh, shows uh, that cities were doing in the beach areas. Uh, that were sanctioned by the city's fireworks show, so we believe a lot of um, people went to see those. Rather than uh, just light them off in, in their backyards compared to twenty twenty. Um, and the other one was, as uh, uh, Councilmember Reyes English just mentioned. You know, we did go on a more aggressive uh, education uh, strategy on this. Uh, we did start several months earlier with banners, social medias, videos. Also setting up uh, online portals for people to, to call, to mail in. Uh, incidents, and we were able to uh, be more responsive in that respect, so we believe that had a, a contributing factor in this. For this year, we had a total of uh, approximately twelve fires, uh, none of them actually were respond, were directly. Related to the fireworks calls, but they were uh, throughout that uh, month period, um, that we had throughout the. Uh, or, we had those calls. And uh, as part of this month or two-month-long process, we. Uh, had five major confiscations of fireworks uh, uh, that were being sold illegally. Um, and uh, one of them included the, the ATF, and the other was actually the FBI. And our partnership with them to uh, uh, recover a large amount of illegal fireworks, hopefully contributed to some. Uh, reduction in, in, uh, in fireworks this year. Um, so some of the issues that we continually face every year is, you know, we are surrounded by areas uh, of the county jurisdiction, other cities. And we do not have any direct control over enforcement in that area. And yes, the sheriff's department were out there and, and you know, we were out there too, but again. Uh, because it's right next to Hawthorne, when there are large, you know, uh. Uh, illegal fireworks going off in a county jurisdiction or in another city. Um, it affects all of us, including in town, but again, the jurisdictions, different areas, so. Depending on what area it is, uh, you know, we have very little control of, uh, over that. And then this year, because there were maybe less amount, uh, amount of fireworks, the large ones were even much more dramatic. Um, because there were less compared to the year before, so the illegal ones going off, they were uh, uh, much more uh, pronounced. And you know, one of the difficulties for officers is that they have to see this and act like somebody actually lighting this, the, the fireworks off, and it's very difficult. Um, uh, and, and resource-heavy thing to, for us to go do, so. You know, we did the best we can, we were out, uh, we, we had maximum amount of deployment out there compared to the year before. And unfortunately, you know, there were no injuries that were reported or any major fires, which is obviously a major concern. So that's a brief summary of uh, this year's fireworks calls, and I'm available for questions and questions.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to just make mention real quick, Chief Ishi. Um, what are, can you just provide us real quick, uh, the fines, what are the fines for uh, uh, the illegal fireworks?
So I believe the fines are, they used to be a hundred dollars, and I believe there are administrative citation is a thousand dollars.
Um, okay.
I'd have to, I'd actually have to have the city attorney review that, but that's the, my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that the, you, do you need to lay out your case a little bit more, uh, Councilwoman English, or is that it?
I know, I want, I want, I wanna hear from the council member, yeah, I wanna hear council members.
Councilmember Patterson, then I'll go, and then Mayor Protem, and then uh, Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question for the chief, uh, chief, you know, I, I know this is kind of um, you know, um, hypothetical, right? But if there were no safe and sane fireworks that, that did happen in the city. Would it be easier to catch the illegal fireworks?
Uh, I'm not sure, so, so yes, it, it would help us with it, there's less people out there. You know, lighting uh, fireworks, whether it's safe and sane or not, um, and we can uh, maybe pinpoint. Areas that are lighting illegal fireworks. Um, so yes, that is a possibility, we wouldn't know until we actually, obviously, or, you know, have that out there, so. Not sure.
Well, to the council, I have a couple just ideas, just throwing it out there, uh, maybe might wanna put this in the ballot for the people to make a decision. Um, perhaps maybe we wanna do a trial year, one to three years of no safe and sane fireworks, we can take some of the. The, this eleven million we just uh, were allocating to our general fund and, and give some money to the nonprofits. That uh, usually uh, run safe and sane fireworks, kinda compensate them for the next three years for not running them. Uh, do a, maybe a pilot period of three years of no safe and sane fireworks. To see if there, if that does anything positive in the community, and at the same time, take some more money to um. Invest in our own fireworks show and promote that. And, and you know, that, that might be, you know, like a, you know, we do as a trial period for a year, maybe two or three years to see. Crime impact it makes, and if it doesn't. You know, make any kind of positive impact in the illegal fireworks, we'll go back to where it was.
Okay, so, this is my turn, uh, alright, uh, councilman, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Chief Ishi? I guess the better question is, I mean, the question was posed, uh, will eliminate, will making. Safe and sane fireworks make it easier to catch um, the illegal fireworks, and. I ought to think that not that much, because we don't have anything on the books that would, I mean, if you can't catch them now. What's make, what's, what's to mean that you're going to be able to catch them later?
Sure, so uh.
Oh, go ahead.
Couple points are yes, so you know, it is. It's resource-heavy, right, so uh, we have to, you know, and, and every situation's different, every neighborhood's different, some have large parties. So for us to try to find, and we've, we've had this before, when we would try to find somebody, they'd run to the back of the house, we're chasing them. We're quickly surrounded, I mean, there, the, the resources would really have to, uh, uh, we'd have to really beef up our resources. The other issue is, you know, there are cities and neighboring cities that are still selling uh, safe and sane fireworks, so. Um, if we stop selling, there's a possibility the folks from here would go to the different, uh, to the other cities and spend their money there. So it's a, there's no one easy fix to this, this is a county-wide problem, we talk about this with the chiefs. Uh, every year, uh, we're not the only ones having this issue, but um, uh. Coming up with a, a easy solution, obviously, it's difficult, I mean, you know. Compared to twenty twenty to this year, things have gone down. We'll have to see what next year and maybe the following years look like and what the trends will be. Um, I do believe though, uh, having a, a city sanctioned or some sort of public fireworks where families can go. Would be a um, you know, something that, that would help. Uh, we see it in the beach cities, uh, that, that did that, especially this year, so I hope that answers your questions.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go straight to my points, well, the reality is, folks, uh, illegal fireworks are already illegal. Okay, those are the ones that are giving us the problems, those are the ones that go up in the air, and those are the ones that explode. Uh, the safe and sane fireworks are not the ones that are causing the problems, those are the ones that you have the little kids seeing their dad and their mom put out in the street. And everybody's gathered around celebrating the Fourth of July. It's the illegal ones that are brought from TJ, that are brought from Nevada, because TNT and Phantom fireworks. They produce those, those bottle rockets, and they produce those AMATIS, and they produce the mortars. So these are allowed in other states, so illegal fireworks are already illegal. And eliminating the legal fireworks will not you eliminate the, uh, will not stop. The proliferation of the illegal fireworks. All local cities have a problem with the illegal fireworks, so I mean, there's just no, there's just no getting around that, so. Let's just say that, and also, I wouldn't wanna take a unilateral decision on this, I would like to put it up to the voters. But we know from experience that at least in two thousand six, uh, we've had like three, uh, three ballot measures. In the last thirty years maybe, the last one being in two thousand six, and it failed. The residents did not want to eliminate the safe and sane fireworks, okay, so it's destined to fail, I believe. Some people may say, oh, it's not, well, I don't believe it will, but the, again, the problem, I mean, the logic is there. Legal, eliminating illegal, uh, legal fireworks is not gonna impact the illegal ones. Okay, it's like the little game that you have the little beavers that pop up in the hole, you bop one on the head, and then another one pops up over here. And uh, another one pops over here, and you're trying to bop them, you will never get all the ones. With even a hundred officers, six square miles, if you have all of them on duty, you will not be able to stop the illegal fireworks. But, um, so I do have some action item suggestions as an alternate, I mean, I'm not just gonna say no, 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 I would like to provide at least some action items here. Increasing the fines, where at a thousand bucks, I do, I am aware that other cities have increased it to twenty-five hundred bucks. I would like to make it as hefty as possible, so it could be a, something that detract, uh, will make people think twice. If possible and legally possible, I would love to pu- publish the names of those people who are, who have been fined for this. And uh, if it's legally allowable, so I'd like for our city uh, attorney to take a look to see if that's something that we can do. Increasing the fines to twenty-five hundred and to publish the names very publicly. So that people know who these people, uh, who, who they are. But most importantly, to be able to police and to be able to arrest those people, or, or even, not arrest, but to find these people. One of the main problems that the chief says is that when people are lighting them on the street. They go and run into the backyard of the, of their friend's house, or whoever it is, okay? They can't, if they don't see them lighting it, then what you call it, they can't, uh, they can't uh, find that person. So the alternate thing to that is what's happened in other cities is to put, um, to pass an ordinance. Which is called a social host ordinance, which, just like when somebody's drinking at somebody's house and they go out and crash. Who's responsible? The person in the house, because they had a party, if there's kids there, they drink, they go crashing, hurt themselves, who's responsible? The owner of the house, uh, you're familiar with what I'm talking about, right, chief? The social host ordinance. If we pass an ordinance here in the City of Hawthorne, that will allow our officers. To be able to find the owner of a house that this person went to hide, hide into, they're responsible for harboring a criminal. And that'll, that'll definitely, and, and if we have a lot of those examples of people who. And that'll, that'll definitely, and if we have a lot of those examples of people who have been, uh, fined uh, for that, it'll, it'll be easier for you guys to do that and come up with the fines and issue fines. And then we'll be able to put those people out as an example and attract, there's no way you could get away from this stuff. You know, you, you're gonna get a ticket. It'll make it so much easier. I think that's an alternative. And 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 you're right, based on my discussion with the, the councilwoman, I do feel that like a lot of nonprofits claim, oh, this is our fundraising source, fundraising source, but guess what? Like, uh, a few years back, we did the math and a lot of the, a lot of the nonprofits were hardly making any money, okay? At some point, so fees, the permits and all this stuff was just kind of exorbitant. And the margin, the profit margin was really small. Maybe it's increased now for whatever reasons, but back then there was a concern. So summarizing, increasing the fines, publishing the names of those who have been fined and a social ordinance to be able to find the people, uh, who housed the people who are shooting the fireworks. So whether we discuss that now or agree on it now, uh, we can go come back in a separate discussion item, okay? Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Patterson.
No, I was next.
Oh, you're next, Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Montero, and then back to, uh, Councilmember Patterson, if that's the case.
So, so Mayor, I like your suggestions. I like all of your suggestions. I think we should go with those. Um, but I also wanted to, um, to add in that, uh, the suggestion that Chief Ishi made was that was that we give a fireworks show. Have the people, have something to, have an alternative to go to. Let's, uh, let's plan a fireworks show. So we would have to determine where the venue would be, probably Memorial Park, that would be the best one. But I think that's a great idea, give, because we have no, we have no entertainment sources in Hawthorne, and I think that's part of the problem. But I think a, a good fireworks show would give them an alternative. It doesn't have to be Memorial Park. Uh, it could be someplace else, but, um, I think that would be a good suggestion as well. I'm, I'm very concerned about the fact that, um, our nonprofits rely so much on, um, on money from the fireworks in order to, 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 to have, help their projects. So I heard some really, I, I heard some really important, um, things that were said about tonight. This would decimate the ranks of the nonprofits who rely on the sale of safe and sane fireworks. They use it to help their soccer, their little league, the Kiwanis Club. And, um, as far as helping them out, I disagree with Councilmember Patterson on helping them out as far as giving them money. It, the money ebbs and flows, the amount they make. This year, I know for a fact that the Kiwanis Club made a lot of money. If we help, we might be, if we, if we committed ourselves to helping reimburse them for what they lose, we might be on the hook for fifty thousand dollars. I think that would just be way too much money for us to spend to, uh, to, to, to supplant what they would have made from the sale of, uh, safe and sane fireworks. The, uh, the, the money ebbs and flows. Sometimes they don't make very much. This year, I think they made a lot. So that, so, so that would really not be a good idea for us to do that. But I like your suggestions. I like the idea of the hefty fine. I like the idea of the host, um, of being responsible for, for whatever, um, whatever, uh, it is for someone who, who is, who is hiding in, in someone's home. And, um, and the host would be responsible for the, for the, for the fine. I, I like that idea. So I would, I would, I would second that. If you want to make a motion, I would second that.
Okay, uh, I, I will, well, uh, I will, I, I, I probably bring it back.
Isn't this, isn't this my action?
No, 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 I know.
I know, I want you guys.
I'm backing you up.
I want to hear what you have to say, but I think it comes back to me.
I'll bring that back for discussion later.
I want to be sure.
No, but I appreciate the support in a sense of it right now, but, uh, go ahead, Ca- uh, Councilmember Montero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's interesting, right? Because, uh, all of you know, I, I done fireworks for nineteen years, right? And, uh, every year I would have an apply because I would have qualified, right? Because I had five nonprofit that I, that I'm in charge. So every year I would have maybe three, two, or maybe one fireworks there. But the mayor is correct. See, even I think the, the council, we don't have no authority to, to ban the fireworks. Because the people of Hawthorne voted. They voted yes on fireworks. So if we're going to do anything to change that, we have to go to the voters. So if we want to put something on the ballot that will not cost money, so then we'll put it on November twenty-two, that is the general election, we would put on the ballot then for people to say yes or no. But the chief is correct. The reason we have a problem because Hawthorne is surrounded by the non-incorporated area of LA County. And if you are outside and you see most of the illegal fireworks comes from the non-incorporated areas of LA County. They blew up, you know, the sky. So it, it is, it is tough to enforce. But I do agree that, you know, maybe we should put a fine up to five thousand dollars. I, I would vote on that. If we catch the, the illegal bottle rockets go up, because they started, you know, two months before, uh, Fourth of July. Yes, nonprofits doing, you know, they, 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 it, it's one year that they have fun and they make some money. In the past, yes, we used to do a lot of money, but now we not make a lot of money. Right? The, during the pandemic, they start to make some money because the, the fireworks was, was limited. Because China was not sending too much fireworks to the United States because of shipping problems. Okay, so that is where there was, the supplies was limited. And then we have last fireworks stand that we have in the past. That's why the way these people, they make money, okay? So the nonprofit is right, they can make, you know, maybe ten to twenty thousand dollars in, in, in five days or seven days that will help their, their little league or the preschool, et cetera, et cetera. But like I said, we as a council, I would never vote to eliminate, you know, safe and sound fireworks because, uh, the seat of Hawthorne, the constituent voted yes on that. Okay, so that is why we have to go back to them and ask them what they want us to do. If they voted yes, then we would say no more fireworks. If they know, we'll continue to have, stand and say fireworks. But I do agree that we probably Hawthorne, maybe we need to do some with, uh, David Patterson and Ms. Valentine and, and the man, even Ishi, to come up with maybe a show, a fireworks show that maybe talk to one of the high school, uh, Hawthorne High or losing, you know, to do it from, from them, because they have a lot of space that people can sit and watch the fireworks show. So to come up with a partnership between us and, and one of the schools, maybe it's Centennial Valley to do a show. But the people of Hawthorne have to decide if they still want those fireworks stands in, in our streets. And we only have limit to eight fireworks stand, right? But the problem of fireworks would never go away. Is here to stay forever, because Fourth of July is Independence Day and they celebrate American independence and is going to have fireworks. And they're going to get the illegal fireworks in Nevada, in Arizona, in Tijuana, wherever. And it's going to be done on non-incorporated areas, most of it. And it's nothing we can do about. Look, LA City bans fireworks. But you see, if you look at the skies, you see a lot of fireworks blowing up from, from LA City. So it, it is, it is, it is, it is a new thing. We cannot, we cannot change the outcome of this. Fireworks, it's gonna be fireworks until this earth is dissipated by the global warming. So I will say, if you want to put on the ballot, I, I would, I would support to put on the ballot on twenty twenty-two, November twenty-two. But again, fines, I, I know twenty-five hundred dollars cheap. Look, we can go up to five thousand dollars. So they'll discourage people for doing illegal fireworks. And I agree, I agree also on that ordinance of, of the party host that they should be liable for whatever comes from them driveway, okay? That's it.
Okay, I have a quick comment. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, how much does it cost to put an item on the agenda?
I'm actually looking into.
I mean, I mean, I mean, it's on the, on the ballot.
Yeah, I'm looking into that right now.
Well, the general election is not gonna be that much, Mr. Mayor, because we already gonna have an election. Okay, on November twenty, on November, on November twenty-two, if we want to do it, it will not cost us too much money because we already have schedule for election.
Look, I'm, I'm gonna be bold in saying this, man. I mean, I'm sorry, and all respect to my council colleague that put this on the, to for discussion. We're discussing, right?
Yes, we're discussing, that's it.
Well, you, you wanted to hear from us, right?
Can I finish? I mean, at some point, can I?
I will, but let me just leave the last point. You're next. You're gonna end this whole conversation.
Okay.
I've received what? I would like for us to count how many calls we've received on our hand, on our two hands. And is that going to push us to spend city money to put this on the, uh, on the ballot? When we have a great abundance of nonprofits, of residents that have already shown in the, in previous past that they've voted for it. There is a cost that's incurred, so I, I really think that we should try these, uh, these, uh, the increasing the fine, the social host ordinance. And then if there's a big movement from the commu- it always just subsides after the election, uh, after the, uh, the, the, the comments and the costs subside, that's the reality. Whoever's hearing out there can call me and I'll talk to them, whatever. But it all goes away, but is that going to justify going through this whole, like, every year are we gonna put something on the ballot because we get like ten calls? I mean, I'm sorry.
No, we don't have to, but I'm saying. As a city council, we don't have even authority to do.
Councilmember, uh, that's all I'm saying, Councilwoman English, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, my goodness. Uh, you know, obviously, it's a healthy, it's a healthy debate. The mayor and I spoke today, this afternoon, about this item. And, uh, he and I agreed that there should be a, an increase on fines. Uh, what that looks like, Mr. Kim, if you could please let us know what that looks like. I know the city of Lawndale, uh, puts across a banner along Hawthorne Boulevard when it's fireworks season and speaks about illegal fireworks and how much that fine is. I'd like to see a banner similar, and I'd like the maximum that we could do, even if it is five thousand. Uh, we want the bad actors to stop, uh, shooting off illegal fireworks. And let me just first of all say, uh, since I left in twenty eighteen, I've heard it time and time and time again. Nobody wants to bring the item on the agenda to have a discussion. So to those people that reached out to me and said, thank you, Councilwoman, for adding this item to the agenda, you're welcome. And I'm doing this for the residents so that we could hear once and for all the conclusion from the council member, members that serve this community. It has nothing to do with eliminating, uh, funding sources to our nonprofits. However, I do suggest that there's other ways of raising monies. And that's something that your nonprofit organization has been doing for many years, as I'm hearing here in this, in this, uh, conversation that we had today from our callers and from those that wrote to us. So, uh, I believe that we need to increase the fines. I believe we need to make more of a, of a PSA campaign, and I thank the chief for his reporting out and, and giving us, uh, statistics, which is important. And whether or not we get, uh, one caller, five persons, uh, that are, are against it, their concerns are being, uh, uh, you know, are being addressed. And that's what all, ultimately I want to do, is to address those folks that have the concerns with regards to illegal fireworks. I have yet to hear anybody call me and tell me, by the way, that M eighty that blew up last night was sounding so beautiful. My house was shaking, my dogs were, you know, under the beds, but thank you, that M eighty was just so beautiful. And I say this to say that sometimes the safe and sane are also bothering some. And we need to make efforts also to, um, perhaps, uh, and I did discuss this with the mayor. Use losing our high school. If you remember back in the days, losing our high, high school used to do the fireworks, uh, show. And we partnered with them, we would, uh, you know, be in the stands, right? However, we want to make sure that we're secure when we're doing a, a suggested fireworks show that we're, uh, far away as possible. But this is something we could discuss again with the city of Lawndale, with losing our high school, possibly shutting off the street, um, along Prairie and Hawthorne Boulevard on Roche Crans and making that, uh, you know, the stadium where folks can sit and view a show. I like the fact that, um, uh, the, the, what the mayor mentioned, and those that are, uh, caught ultimately would be published and shown with embarrassment that, you know, they need to stop doing this and allowing for this bad behavior to happen. I have some concerns with regard to the social host ordinance just because I think, um, that would be something that, uh, I would ultimately want, uh, a legal confidential from, uh, Mr. Kim and the chief in, uh, collaboration on what that looks like. Because, um, you know, ultimately, we don't want to put our officers in harms way, uh, by something like this because, you know, we never know what we're up against. And, um, yes, fireworks, um, is a national holiday. It's the people's, uh, holiday. It's the people's birthday of our nation and everybody wants to be in celebration. I totally agree on that. Um, again, the item was brought for discussion. Uh, the action is to address those other concerns. And so, um, again, uh, a healthy debate is a good debate. Uh, I appreciate, again, the involvement that folks took out of their day to comment and to provide their concerns and or not. And so, um, I think we've been given instruction, uh, to Mr. Norris and to Mr. Kim, ultimately, what would like to see. I never discussed or did I, did I ever mention an ordinance, uh, excuse me, um, a ballot proposition on the ballot? That was nothing I even mentioned. Uh, but if it was brought up, it was brought up, uh, again, through discussion. So, um, a PSA campaign, a fine increase and, uh, you know, publication, if there are any of those that are ultimately, um, you know, arrested or, um, you know, caught doing illegal fireworks. But, uh, for those residents, again, uh, that have expressed concerns regarding their pets, uh, regarding them being veterans, uh, with regards to seniors, with regards to, um, special need students, uh, children, adults, et cetera. I'm sentimental to, to all of those that reached out to me, uh, with those concerns. And even, uh, you know, before I, I had this item, uh, discussing it here publicly, but moreover, during the time of, uh, campaign season. And so I was glad to put that on the agenda and bring it to the, the leaders here, obviously. And, uh, I think it's a healthy discussion and I like everyone's participation ultimately. And, uh, if there's anything more, that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate you bringing this on board. Uh, yes, and everybody had an opinion, so that's great. Uh, discussion action, uh, item number twenty-six, six is on the status of the recruitment for interim positions. Councilmember Patterson, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I, we obviously had a number of discussions about how we're gonna fill, uh, the city manager and city attorney position. I know we had asked our previous HR director to, uh, get us some quotes on the cost of hiring a, uh, outside firm to handle that recruitment. I just want to confirm what the results of that was. Um, I believe we got some numbers, is that correct, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, yes, we did get a few quotes back. Would you like to know the cost for that?
Yes, please.
Uh, to recruit each position, the average is, uh, about twenty-two to twenty-three thousand dollars per position to recruit. To do a nationwide recruit.
Yeah, so I, I, I got, I kind of heard that it was around that, that amount, so, you know, it sounds a little bit more than I had hoped. Uh, I know we had, uh, I think there's Montero throw the idea of see if we can just kind of, kind of break on it if we're gonna be hired for two, but it doesn't sound like that was the case. Uh, I want to suggest that perhaps that we, we, uh, start off by just taking it in-house um, and opening up the recruitment, uh, in-house. See what we attract ourselves through our, our own, our own methods. Um, if we, uh, you know, we attract some great candidates, uh, great. If, if we don't, then, you know, we don't have to make any, any, uh, any movement. Um, and then we may choose, uh, to spend the money after all and hire another recruitment firm. I don't know, and so that's my suggestion. I don't know, you know, how my colleagues feel about that.
All right, so, uh, Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank, uh, Mr. David Patterson to bring us this up. Um, I would recommend, uh, for the, uh, staff, especially, uh, the interim HR director to concentrate, uh, right now on those positions that needs to be filled immediately from, you know, the head departments that we're missing. And from the other position that is going to, uh, make the city hall move forward, you know, because we have a lot of, uh, openings, you know, from the housing department to, to the, uh, finance, to the licensing, uh, to the building, it's not building and saving, but to the planning, planning department, uh, the, the city attorney department. So concentrate on those positions first, because we need to fill up those first and then later on. And then later on, we we could uh begin the process about the uh interest city manager and interim uh city attorney, because right now, the the city, you know, right now they function well. So we just need to fill these other positions first that is critical to our, to our uh city hall functioning um on the on the a much better way to serve our our public, okay? That's my recommendation.
Um I think to, you know what, I think uh that's more of a in I think we're giving the gentleman about four additional months or what, for a total of six months or something, able to. I think right now of the the priority should be that, that we start filling in those uh positions. I mean, we have like five or six positions, I think, that we need to backfill or s- uh that we need to fill. And um I think that's more urgent as opposed to try to put our hands in.
What are, what are the open, what are the open positions?
HR, planning. Uh licensing.
We're hiring two or three people in HR.
Ha- housing, housing department needs some So Vaughn, you could, you have the whole list, right?
I can share if you like.
Yeah, please.
Uh we're, our posi- current positions are vacant, starting from department heads, uh playing director, HR director, uh licensing director, uh non uh department heads, uh HR analyst, uh we have two of those positions available, and we have a few uh positions in housing available. Uh vacant, excuse me. And lastly, we have a position vacancy in the city attorney's office for assistance city attorney.
Well, I'd like to know what are the most urgent ones that need to be filled right away?
One he just mentioned.
Really, uh no, seriously, uh I I agree, that's uh the, yeah, all of them, all of those positions. We have some, we have the two people at the top, yeah, attorney, manager right now, interim, whatever. But man, they 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 need the foot soldiers out there. And the foot soldiers are not uh not around, so. Uh it's it's spreading their, it's spreading their workload.
The reason I ask that question is because obviously, if we do it in-house, we're going to have to de- devote some staff to doing it. Do we have the staff capable? With the, do we have the staff that's available to actually do that recruiting in-house?
Not yet.
That's why we need to hire an HR director first.
And I, and I I I also agree that we should do it in-house first.
Yes, we do, we do in-house, but we need to hire an HR director so that she or he can take that task.
Yeah, I don't disagree. We have a part-time HR uh person, so. Of course, I agree, we need a HR director first, right, in order to facilitate any serious recruitment.
Oh, because right now she have a handful trying to recruit all these positions that we have. So I I I'll say that Vaughn, uh you know, try to constant, try to work with Irma to to try to fill up this position that we have that is critical to our function. Uh because planning and 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 licensing and HR and housing is critical for to 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 make sure that we are providing an excellent service to our constituents.
Uh council would like, uh I can give a full report in thirty days of positions that we have uh filled, our status on interviews and placement.
Please, that'll be good. Thank you, Vaughn.
Did you have anything else?
I'm sorry, was a question for me?
I was asking Mayor Protim, if she had anything else on the subject.
No, I have nothing else.
Okay, um you also have another item, Councilmember Patterson. Discussion action item number twenty-seven is clarification regarding the selection of cannabis consultant from the final three candidates. Go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that we all received uh some information from the city attorney's office answering uh Mayor Protim's question about uh, uh I guess, a professional background of the finalists. And so I believe we have all the information that we need. Uh we've interviewed everybody, we we've interviewed all the candidates more than once. Done a number of rounds of voting, done some uh background surveys already. I would like to place on the next agenda um uh us selecting a uh a consultant.
Through the chair?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I agree with the, with the Mister David Patterson that uh we have done everything that we should have done. And and actually, you know, based on the legal confidential, um I I was just going to make a motion that that, you know, we actually hired the e-Jama planning, uh because they have the expertise. The head of the people, uh she is a planner, and we, the second one is a lawyer, she was a prosecutor. So I believe that that and and being a small a consultant firm is better than the big one, because then their concentration will be easier to get access to them and to give them, to give us all the attention that we need to create this cannabis program uh to our city. So, I I was even actually ready to make a motion that we.
Are we able to make that motion in this meeting? If so, I mean, I'm.
I was gonna, I was gonna refer back, uh uh although my hand is up, I'm, I was gonna refer back to Councilmember Patterson, since this is his item.
Yeah, um if we're able to, or Mister City Attorney, are we, can I, can we make that motion at this time?
Uh yes, yes, we can. It's listed as a discussion action item, meaning that the council may decide to take an action. Uh we have given notice, although the agenda is for clarification.
Just bring it back. Why don't we, we'll just have a discussion on it.
Yeah, it's the agenda is actually clarification regarding the selection of the cannabis consultant, because staff wasn't, wasn't uh fully given direction as to the next step. We were given uh direction to provide back- background, which we, the staff did. Uh but the staff wasn't uh given direction of the next step. So, the agenda item is actually clarification, so I um am I uh rereading the agenda item, I don't think we should vote on select the person at this point. Um we can bring it back as an agenda item to make a selection if that's what council votes to do today, uh the final step.
Yes, please.
Well, that's, that's what it's gonna be.
Alright, so bring it back.
You're good with bringing this item, putting it on the agenda for the next council meeting?
I am.
Okay, I'm gonna put my hand down.
Yeah, just to, just to to clarify what Mister Robert Kim just said, because uh in our last meeting, when we gave instruction to do the background check on the three finalists. It was, and then we said, based on those background check, we were going to make a decision. So, just bring him back, Robert.
Next, uh we have Ivan of twenty-eight, elected officials reports, recommendations. Uh starting off with City Treasurer.
Hey, guys. Uh great meeting. Um it's a bummer about this uh this new variant, you know, creeping up again. Uh but everyone's making the best of it. You know, just, you know, working with the the money, uh there is, you know, a lot of money coming in, uh but it will be going out uh as far as, you know, the the funds that have to be spent on on different things. Um and that's really all I have to report.
Thank you, thank you, Mister City Treasurer. Uh Mister City Clerk?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few um items. First of all, I wanna thank everyone for watching from home um who called to make their voices heard today. Uh first, I wanna thank Chief Ishi and HPOA for uh their time and effort for creating the scholarship uh for such an honorable cause um and for awarding the money to Jeremy. As a college professor and counselor, I can tell you five thousand dollars uh goes a long way at Humboldt, so uh so that's truly appreciated. Uh I wanna thank Remote Tutoring who came up with the idea and resources to hold a backpack giveaway this Saturday. We're able to provide backpacks to about a hundred students, and we also gave, I wanna thank the Girl Scout uh Girl Scouts for providing cookies for the families who attended. Uh I also wanna remind the community that we're continuing to hold our small fresh produce giveaway this Saturday at ten AM. Um and uh so we hope to see you all in front of City Hall this Saturday. On average, we've been providing produce to about a hundred and fifty families at each event, um and registering a few people to vote. Uh so I wanna thank all the volunteers and the American Heart Association for providing the produce. Um and if anyone there out there needs a short-term job, the L.A. County Clerk's Office is recruiting Vote Center clerks to assess with the recall election, and they're basically paying them to work for ten days, um about eleven hundred dollars. So it's a pretty good gig for someone that needs some extra cash out there. Um so please email us if you're interested at cityclerk@cityofhawthorne.org, and we'll put you in contact with someone at the county clerk's office. Um and last, uh kinda um going, you know, back to the topic about COVID. Um yeah, so please, if you haven't, please get vaccinated. Um and also, when you're indoors in a public setting, please wear your mask. Uh and for information on locations to get vaccinated, uh go to vaccinatedlacounty.com, and that's all for me. Thank you, everyone. It's nice to be back.
Awesome. Uh Councilmember Ray English?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh let me first of all thank Mister Klein for coming and providing us uh information on the uh recall election. Uh that's a, uh that'll be a, a well-attended um voting process, I I do believe, but uh thank you for the information that you provided to our community. And I'd like to ultimately uh assure that uh everything that is uh told today be on uh the the city clerk's website for more assistance to our residents, if that's the case, including uh if they haven't received their ballot, the number to call. Um I'd like to uh congratulate um Hawthorne's fallen hero, Mister uh Peña. Uh congratulations to you and congratulations to the police department, uh honoring uh Officers Garten and Luna, who we well remember and will always remember, and thank you for that scholarship in their name. Um great national night out. Thank you to all those that participated and came out. It was a great event. Kudos uh to to um Vaughn, to your staff, to everybody that participated at Wreckin' Parks. Kudos to all the participants. Um saw Mister Kim there also. Thank you for all those that participated and made efforts, and it was just a well-rounded event, and DJ Mayor spinning out the tunes out there. He has, he has some alright tunes. They're okay, they're okay. But uh it it was, it was a great event, and then um I just wanna make mention again uh the great ride-along that I shared with the Hawthorne Police Department. It was uh ve- very, very uh educational. And uh having said that, I like to ultimately bring an item to the agenda, uh giving direction uh to look to increase uh citations for uh preferential parking, where you're not supposed to be parking without a permit, increasing those fines and any other fine that I um uh have seen that the police officers uh continue to struggle with, so I want to ultimately work along with the chief and the city attorney's attorney's office to see what those fines look like for um, you know, the bad actors out there that are taking up uh preferential parking and 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 other um illegal um citation that might be out there, activity. Um other than that, I I appreciate um the time that uh I took with regards to meeting with each department, talking about our stimulus money, asking for them to provide a wish list of sorts, uh which included workforce, which included training, which included addressing the needs of our workforce first, and uh the opportunity to meet with those orga- uh those department heads and staff, so that was uh, that was great, and I appreciate that. And uh I also wanna thank Vaughn for taking me out and just showing me um the city and how we're, how we're doing with regards to our infrastructure, with regards to our roadways, our um streets, improvements, um addressing uh tree trimming needs, addressing um things that are still uh can be improved, and uh contacting um Republic Services where uh we continue to have bulky items that need to be picked up, uh dumping that continues to happen. I want to ultimately enforce uh dumping, uh illegal dumping, so uh that's a criminal case. If uh if you are caught in in the action uh through full prosecution, uh where you're used as a witness to assure that this does, never happens again, and reimbursing the city for the loss that we took having to recruit all those bulky items and trash on your behalf. So anything we could do um Attorney Kim, to address those um those individuals also. And thank you to those that attended my uh birthday dinner. It was a great event. It was good to see just people relaxing, enjoying themselves after a long day of work. And uh I can't express enough the workforce. I see you out there, and thank you for what you're doing and how you're helping uh continue to beautify the city of Hawthorne. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor.
So it'll be Councilmember Montero and then Councilmember Patterson. I need to go get something real quick. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Alright, thank you. Uh again, uh thank you for the public and thank you for all those calling and the emails that we receive uh showing that people pay attention to our agenda, so thank you very much. And I wanna thank our staff also for, you know, for giving us the come in and giving us all the presentation from the chief uh to um Mister um Alan. Uh thank you, Vaughn, thank you, um Mister Robert Kim for the work well done, you know, Kajka has been very busy. So uh it's been a very busy summer, so thank you for all the work you guys have been doing out there. I wanna thank Doctor Paul Jimenez to bring our uh Jeff Klein from the county to give us the update on the recall election. I also wanna express my appreciation and thanks to the police department, especially to create this scholarship uh on uh wanting to honoring our fallen heroes, you know, Andrew Garten and you know, uh Luna, so. Um I think that was one of the best thing that they could come across uh scholarship, like Doctor Paul Jimenez said, five thousand dollars goes far, far away for people to go to college, so because nowadays, you know, just to go to uh a UC system costs you almost forty thousand dollars a year, so it's a lot of money uh for for college. So thank you uh for bringing this scholarship to, to especially to the explorer, uh you know, Jeremy Peña and and uh and I know that uh he's going to be an outstanding citizen and help our community, especially when he talk about, you know, work with the adoption and kids that in foster care, so that's, that's a tremendous achievement. So thank you for that. Just mentioned that uh next week, you know, the schools are gonna come back, right? Uh so it's a challenge out there, because a lot of people uh this uh Delta variant under COVID. Uh some people wants to use masks, some people don't wanna use masks, so it's a challenge. So we're gonna have uh dealing with the comeback of the s- kids to school, and we need to be vigilant, so people should be aware their mask and still practice social distance, because this Delta variant is much more potent than the other uh first variant that we got, so please, please, please um respect one another, you know, uh life is a precious thing that we all should share, so please, 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 because people are still dying, so. We have to make sure that uh we do our part. Use your mask, that's the number one thing. Um remind everybody that the uh farmer's market is gonna be again on uh August fourteen at the Berryans Ward parking lot uh from ten to three, so uh go and buy some fresh fruit and veggie. Uh so and there is some other awesome crap and and even um some um dog training techniques, so please, you know, bring your dog and 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 have fun at the farmer's market. You know, it's funny, because the national night hour is always August third, and it seems like every, uh is August uh first week of August, always out of town, so, but I saw some great videos that were posted by by the police department from our social media. Uh so thank you for that, uh Ms. Valentine, because I know you're part of the uh of the organ- uh the organized uh committee. So thank you for that, and again, uh thank you to Parks and Rec and Vaughn and the staff at the at the community service uh to make that event a better success, because I saw a beautiful picture, people dancing and and the the jazz and et cetera, et cetera, so uh fantastic job. I think the city is on the right track, you know, uh even when we're talking about the hard money, you know, the American Rescue Plan, and 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 believe me, that we're going to make sure that the money goes to those in need, that the, that people of Hawthorne have suffered for a year and a half, almost two years, especially the business, uh the the uh the landlords, you know, everybody's struggle out there, so we wanna make sure that we're going to give service to where they deserve, and also help our homeless, help uh the nonprofits, so everybody's have is going to get a piece of this money. The city's not gonna keep this money. So we wanna make sure that program is going to tailor what the American Rescue Plan was all about. So we're not gonna, just gonna put this money on 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 general fund and sitting there or create other positions. No, this money have to go and help the community, and that's what we're going, that's what was for, and that's what we're gonna make sure that it is. So uh I want people to be it clear that we're going to do right, to make sure that our constituent is taking care of, because there is a lot of need out there. People struggle for food. Uh, we know still, you know, like, uh, two weeks ago, we gave food away. It was, uh, twelve hundred families came to pick up food. So that's a lot of people out there. And affordable housing, traditional housing. We need to unhouse, we need to house the unhoused people, okay? Cause we can, we tired to see people on our streets, under the freeway, overpass. So it's time for us to do something and we need to do it. And, and regardless of, of the criticism, so we were elected to, to come up with solution, smart solution. And not be afraid to take action. So again, I want to thank all the staff, honor thanks to Vaughn, to Kim and all the head departments that have been working over there with skeleton crew to make sure that the city is running, uh, perfect. So thank you and good night.
Councilmember Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first thank the community for paying attention to what's happening in your city, for calling in, sending the emails, participating in the process. I, I love that. I want to thank staff for all the hard work that you do. Um, obviously the staff's what, what are the ones that, that keep the city running and that provides the great service to our truck community. So I want to thank you guys. A few things wanted to touch on. I, I went on a ride along as well with the Hawthorne Police Department, um, a couple of weeks ago. And it had a great time. I wouldn't mind doing it again. Um, you know, learn some things and got a new perspective on some things. And so definitely appreciate the work that our, our police do. Um, I am excited about the community cleanup event that we're gonna be planning for November third. I know it's something that I had hoped we were able, able to do in the beginning of this year, but obviously that wasn't possible because of the pandemic, some fact that we're able to, to plan something like that, uh, coming from the city. Couple of weekends ago, I also, um, attended a, uh, luncheon hosted by one of our nonprofits, Michael's Learning. I had opportunity to really learn more about that, that organization and the great things they're doing in the community. Um, and helping, uh, youth and adults with, uh, developmental, uh, disabilities. And so I had a great time really understanding, you know, what they did for the community. One thing that I, I was reminded of that they have their own bakery. Uh, and, and bake and sell cookies, uh, as bakeries operated by, um, the, the, the demographic that the nonprofit, uh, serves. As well as a, um, another business that produces like, um, clothes, like embroidered shirts and custom-made clothing. So I had to plan on kind of taking advantage of, of their, those services and those businesses. And so it's just a great kind of business model, uh, and do some great things. They have a vision of being completely self-sufficient without having to depend on, on donations and be able to, uh, use those, those businesses that they run to fund all their programs, which is great. Uh, do, do, what else? Uh, regarding, um, this influx of cash that we have, um, I'd like to ask the finance director and the, the city treasurer to, um, provide me with, uh, some type of written cash management, management strategy. Um, you know, I'd like to kind of know what the, what the formal strategy is for, you know, you know, how much cash do we keep in checking versus how much do we choose to, uh, put in some interest-bearing instruments? Uh, I'd like to, um, know what the plan is for that fifteen million until we spend it. I hope it's not gonna be sitting in checking, uh, earning no interest. Uh, like for us to make sure we're earning some, some money on that money. Uh, and I would like to ask the, the city manager, put on the, the next agenda, a discussion, an item for us to, um, discuss Hawthorne having its own fireworks show. And so I think that, that's a great idea that, that everybody kind of chimed in on. I love for us to really discuss that in detail. And maybe be able to, to institute that if that makes sense for the city. Uh, that's it.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Patterson. And yes, thank you for putting that on the agenda. So we can move ahead and start looking at that. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I want to thank all the staff for their very hard work. I want to thank Chief Ishi and the HPD for, um, the Fallen Hero Scholarship Program. It was very inspiring to listen to, uh, the young man who won the award and his, to know that he, um, really appreciated the effort and the support that he's gotten from the city. Um, I also want to thank the residents for expressing their, uh, their views on fireworks. It's nice to see them engaged and to see them, um, uh, express their views through their letters and through their, um, and, and, and through, and through their emails and through calling in. Um, I'd like, um, to talk about, and I, I also want to, to say that, um, it was a pleasure organizing, helping to organize National Night Out. Uh, and, um, the video of it, it will be shown at the next council meeting and I'll be giving a full report because there were a lot of people to thank and I don't want to, I didn't want to spend time tonight thanking everyone, uh, and might, I might leave out someone. So I want to make sure that I, I, uh, I have everyone in mind. All of the people who contributed and all of the sponsors who, uh, who actually gave, gave funds and who donated food and money. So I want to make sure I thank everyone, but it was a, it was a wonderful evening. And, um, I think everyone had a great time. And we also have a, have a video of it. So I'll be showing that at the next, um, at the next council meeting. So this is on Senate Bills nine and ten. On Saturday, I attended a town hall meeting by Zoom, participated in by more than a thousand attendees statewide. The purpose was to voice opposition to Senate Bills nine and ten, which would effectively eliminate single-family housing in California. Senate Bill nine would require a local government to ministerially approve a housing development containing two residential units in single-family residential zones. It would also require local governments to ministerially approve lot splits. Senate Bill ten would permit cities to pass an ordinance to zone any parcel for up to ten units of residential density per parcel. If the parcel is located in what's called a transit-rich area, a jobs-rich area, or an urban infill site. These bills have passed the Senate and are awaiting House approval. Three members of this council voiced opposition to these bills in March, including me. And since then, more than one hundred and twenty-one mayors and city council members from forty-nine cities have also voiced their opposition. In addition, I, along with two of my colleagues from, um, El Segundo, from El Segundo and from Redondo Beach, wrote an op-ed piece, uh, wrote an op-ed piece which was published in the LA Times on July ninth in opposition to the, to, it, it, this was in opposition to Senate Bill nine. We didn't address Senate Bill ten in that op-ed. It's time for the public to speak out before the state is totally transformed with legislation which would override locally approved zoning rules and permit denser development. We live in Hawthorne. We know we don't need more apartments. We don't need more dense development. I ask the public to write to your local representatives. We don't have much time. The legislature reconvenes on August sixteenth and the vote could be taken at any time after that. Also contact the governor and ask him to veto this legislation if it should pass the legislature and reach his desk. If you want more information about these bills, Senate Bill nine and Senate Bill ten, contact unitedneighbors.net, log on to unitedneighbors.net, which has a great deal of factual data and videos to illustrate the danger of this legislation to our communities. I cannot overstate the problem enough. We will not recognize our communities if these bills pass. There will be so much density throughout California. It will completely diminish the quality of life as we know it now. Thank you. That's all I have. Good night.
Are there any go-bags for anybody? Okay, great. All right. So, um, I want to thank the community for, um, for listening to us. Um, and for all those who will be looking at the, uh, video of this, uh, city council Zoom meeting. Um, it was a good, healthy debate. Uh, we act, we're actually accomplishing a lot. So I want to give kudos to my city council member colleagues. On the, the progress that we're making. We're making a lot of progress on all these different issues. Um, we end up, uh, agreeing on different, on, on most of everything and, uh, end up compromising on, on whatever's left. So I think that's a great thing. Um, so we have great staff that we have in place right now. Uh, we're looking, we're going to recruit a great quality of people to join our team. So, uh, Vaughn, uh, Norris has been, our city interim city manager has been tasked with that. And, uh, I think the future is bright. Um, I'm, I'm very, I'm very happy that, uh, we were taking the conversation on the allotment of those, uh, the thirty-two million dollars, the, uh, federal money that's being given to us, um, the relief money. And that we were thinking about, uh, the different aspects of how we're going to spend it and to benefit the community. So I'm glad that we came up to, uh, a con, a conclusion on that. Uh, a temporary conclusion on that. And, uh, there's a lot of different things that are on the horizon. I think the future is bright. And, um, I really want to just remind everybody, those who have not been vaccinating, vaccinated, to please get vaccinated. Uh, it's safe, uh, there, uh, sometimes you hear stories about, uh, people, uh, having these reactions to the whole, to the vaccinations. But, uh, those are minimal and they're not proven. Uh, for the most part, uh, the, the, the benefit far outweighs, uh, any of the potential negative impacts of taking the vaccine. Okay, that, just look at it that way. Um, so we really want to have everybody out there vaccinate themselves and protect themselves. And sure, I know there's a lot of conflicts. You wear your mask and you don't do this. And many, uh, if you don't wear your mask, you still, and you are vaccinated, uh, and if you don't wear your mask, you can still get it and you have to wear your mask. Well, I mean, just gotta, you still can get, you still can get, uh, the, um, the COVID vi, uh, virus, even if you've taken the vaccine. Uh, it minimizes by a large, large, large amount that you would get it. Um, and so if you happen to get it, you can, it might not be a pronounced effect on your body, but you might still carry it. And so the vaccine has helped minimize the impact on your body. So you can unwillingly carry it and disseminate it around. So that's where the danger is. I just want people to understand that. Okay? And so it's very important that you take the vaccine to protect yourself and those, and all those. Okay? Uh, participate if you would like in the, uh, recall election, whether, whether to recall or whether or not to recall and, uh, make your best decisions when it comes to that. Um, I want to congratulate the National Night Out team. It was lots of fun. I did go out and play a little bit of music with my turntables. It was an opportunity to bring my, uh, seventies disco records, the twelve inches out and some of my R and Bs sold from the seventies and eighties out. So it was cool to, you know, just pull those out from the, uh, from the, uh, from the garage and, uh, play a little bit of that. Um, very well organized. People were so happy. The children were out there jumping around, uh, you know, everybody was happy to see each other, the different community folks, uh, one, uh, council member, English was there too. And, uh, so we saw her and she was excited as well. Um, she was about to, she was about to lead everyone in the line dancing, but I had to stop her because she was like trying. And, uh, but she had fun. And then I also want to thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine for coordinating this thing. And, yeah, you played a major part in this and you were the main coordinator, uh, along with the police department. In putting this together. So it was, I would love to see something else before the summer's over. Okay. So maybe, uh, Vaughn, you could take a look at that, see what that would look like. It'd be great to see something like this, just to get people out there. If it's not too much of a cost, I'm like, it would be great to see, uh, something like this happen. Same recipe. I think it will turn out to be nice. And of course, we also have, uh, events that are coming up.
World Fest.
Yes. World Fest. What, what, what day is it now?
Saturday, September eighteenth.
Saturday, September eighteenth.
Ten to six PM at Memorial Center, Memorial Park. We're gonna have live music. From six, from ten to six. And we're gonna have different food trucks, different culture, different, you know, communities coming together. Um, and Austin Craft.
Do we have any other events that we want to announce? Any other things that are coming up? Uh, Councilmember English, right now's a good time since we're talking about it.
Mayor, since you're talking about, you know, another event before summer's out, how about recognizing our employees like we used to do? And, uh, uh, you know, uh, an appreciation, uh, and host, uh, some vendors such as, you know, um, resources for, for our employees like we did here on one twenty-sixth street where we blocked the street off. We provide vendors. We have some giveaways. We have some pie eating contests. We do, you know, uh, some food for them, barbecue for them, you know, in collaboration with the police department. So that would be a good, uh, I think, closeout. Before we, before we head into winter.
I, I, I think that sounds like a good idea. So, um, Vaughn, can you like, take a look at that? A fun day, a fun day for our employees.
Absolutely, I will. Thank you.
And everybody thinks we're over here all, we're all grouchy and, you know.
What about September second? That is appreciation day on September second.
That's already scheduled. We've already scheduled that. September second.
Is that too, too soon? We'll let them figure it out. We'll let Vaughn because it takes some planning.
Okay, take a look at that and please confirm and just let us know what the schedule is for that day. So we can all know what to expect. How about that?
And so that we're available to attend to.
Yeah, that too, because we're trying over here like set a date because, you know, in the, during the week, it's harder for, for me to attend since I work in the, we all work, but, uh,
Oh, and I, I understand, Mayor, that you're, you're, you're planning, um, our hundred-year anniversary?
Yeah, we're all gonna be able to do that. Um, it's coming up eight, I think it's, uh, twenty-two. That's gotta be next year. So we're gonna be planning, the city's gonna be planning the anniversary, ideally be accompanied with the parade. And maybe some type of carnival atmosphere.
Yeah, it was, it was, we voted on it last year.
Yeah, yeah, we all voted on it. So we, we want to see what that's gonna start looking like. I, I'm pretty sure Vaughn already has that, uh, team started to be formulated. So I'm not concerned about that. We'll, we'll start hearing about all that. So a lot of great things, you know, uh, I think we just need to have the, let the residents know that they, it's, we want them to have fun too, to enjoy living in the city. Not just all the seriousness that, you know, comes with stuff, of course, gotta pay the rent, be able to pay the services here, you know, uh, and get their ser, their money's worth for the services that we offer. But we also wanted them to have fun. So that's what Councilmember Montero's event's about. Maybe an end of the year event. It's going to look like, okay? End of the summer event. Other than that, that's it. So, uh, thank you staff. Thank you council members. Thank you residents, uh, for being here. If there's nothing further, I adjourn the meeting.
Good night, everyone.